We have Zoom. We have people joining by Zoom, but they're only going to be able to hear. I mean, I guess they can speak.
Tell me we're going to mute that because we're here.
Yeah, we're going to mute, yeah.
Yeah, I've been muting as they come in. Hello.
So this is a regular school board meeting. So glad we chose the town hall instead of Big White. I'm not sure how we would have all fit in there. And since this is the... Since it's the first meeting after an election, we actually have to... I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:37. Boy, and Aaron doesn't want to really take minutes yet, do you?
If I can take minutes.
All right, yes, we'll take minutes. So I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:37. And then we have to start with election of our board officers. I'm currently the chair of the board, but every time there's an election, we vote again. So I'm going to... You're already... I'm going to welcome nominations for the chair seat.
I'll nominate you, Jody, if you're interested. You don't have to, though.
I get it, yeah.
I can second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you. For vice chair, I'm going to nominate Aaron McKean.
I can second that.
Yes, you can. All those in favor, if you want the position, say aye. Aye.
Does my vote count before I'm sworn in officially?
You are sworn in.
Oh, that's right, I did say that.
Yes. Yep. And finally, for secretary, I nominate Kevin to be secretary. That's right.
I think Ian should retain both.
Do you want a second?
A second, I'm sorry.
Okay. And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's the initiation thing.
I'll take it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. But Aaron, I think it's going to take minutes tonight. We're going to meet more people. Okay. So we have a roll call, starting by right.
Aaron McKean.
Kevin Morris.
And Jody Underwood. So we've already changed the agenda, the agenda that was posted. We didn't add public comment sections. Clearly, we need some. Then, I mean, we had the swearing in, so we're not going to do that. And then the major part of this meeting is to plan how to meet the revised '22-'23 budget, as you all know. I'm sure you know. And following that, we'll have another public comment, and then we just move to the next meeting. So we're going to start with public comment, but there are a lot of people in here, so I'm going to limit both the amount of time we provide beforehand especially, and in both times, and then the amount of time each person can speak. So I want to... And we might have to change it as we move forward, but I want to say two minutes. How many people want to say something before we start for the first public comment? We just got one person. All right. We'll accept a couple more, but I want to put limits on it, so a couple minutes max, okay?
Just a quick question. Where's Frank and Beth?
They couldn't make... Beth's here.
Oh, okay. Hi, sorry.
I'm here. Yep. Frank couldn't make it tonight. He would have needed to wait a whole week before he could meet with us, and we felt we had to get moving. So we decided to have a meeting. Somebody else? Anybody else? Do we have a standing microphone for people? I thought there was one that was going to be set up. Ian? Thank you, my tech guy. If you want to speak, and you can speak loud, you can go. You can try. No?
So I just wanted to mention that apparently next Tuesday, there is a school board meeting, including the administration of the school on Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Yes, that's what I was told.
I came up for us to discuss the night as far as the next meeting, wasn't it?
Well, we... I don't have that on my calendar.
I'll go back to the last minutes and show you. It was on March 1st, I think. Next school board meeting was scheduled for April 19th.
April 19th.
Okay, I was told today there's one on Tuesday next week.
Well, then you heard about it before we did.
That's interesting. So, huh?
Where do you want this?
Wherever's convenient, you put it there.
And my question. My comment is, the budget in the Warren article was created by you, the school board, over a series of meetings, and was presented in the Warren article as the budget that you all agreed on. So why were the taxpayers in good faith believing that the budget that was in the Warren article was the one that was going to be voted on, only for you to vote on it during the meeting, last minute? It just was very...
The board didn't vote on it during the district meeting. The town did.
It was brought as an amendment. It was proposed from the floor, from citizens, as an amendment to the budget that was...
You voted to allow the change.
No, that's... We didn't...
The town voted.
We did not vote. None of the board voted for that, actually.
None of the board voted?
One person on the board voted for the change in the amount, but didn't actually vote on the article. And the other of us didn't vote on either. It was the town who voted on it. Those are the facts. And even if we did, we're still residents. I mean, we're allowed to vote, but we chose to Epstein.
I just have so many concerns as a parent that it feels that it wasn't done in good faith.
So...
Absolutely.
All right. How do we address this?
Is this going to be recorded in any way?
Well, Skip's recording it, so... Can you record it on Zoom? Wait, please.
Is that picking up the audio?
I don't know. You can try.
I'm trying to record.
You're trying.
I think it should be. Recording in progress.
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. So we prepared a frequently asked questions document. I don't know if everybody has a copy. I hope enough copies were made. Here they are. So they're being passed out. A lot of your questions should actually be answered here. I... Yeah, I don't know what to... I suppose I don't have to respond. I mean, this is just the state of it. These kinds of things happen at the town and district meetings, during meetings. This is a little radical, but it wasn't the board that did it. We did not make the motion. We didn't plan for it. We have been scrambling ever since the vote to try to come up with some ideas. We won't have a plan by the end of tonight, but we are talking about ideas, things that we have listed to in the last two days, the amount of time we had to look at it. So that's where we are.
I just have like a housekeeping question in terms of when a member was sworn in, and whether that before or after the meeting.
They were sworn in on Saturday.
It was after the meeting.
After the district meeting, yeah, but before today.
We looked up the RSAs, and the only requirement is that one or more of the existing board members have to be present in the forum, or the counterparty. It's not a requirement for it to happen in a meeting. If it would make everyone feel better, I have no...
No, we've never done it. We've never done it during a meeting, Kevin. It's never happened during a meeting. You go to the town, somebody swears you in, yeah. He's legal. Yeah. All right. So ideas, I mean...
Tom might have another question.
I mean, I am so glad if I'm honest, but I guess one of my big ones would be, do we have to set a rate based on a public school? Or I know that there's no point such as the thing as anchor school per se, but I mean, I guess that term does get thrown around. So do we have to set our rate based on an anchor school? And if that's true, does the anchor school have to be a public school? And if so, you know, what do you plan to do about the fact that we're going to have this massive deficit on the budget?
So we... I spoke with a legal at the Department of Ed, and I asked him that question. I asked him if our tuition has to be tied to a particular school, and he said no. What it has to... Yeah, I mean, that's it. We just have to be able to provide a free and adequate education, the opportunity for it to all citizens.
And who did you speak to when you said that?
His name is Chris Bond. He's with the Department of Ed.
Chris Bond, the Department of Ed?
Yep. I've been on the phone all day today. You can't imagine. Yep.
Who exactly, or what parameters are used in defining a free and adequate education?
It is really unclear.
That's my main concern is, you know, if we're going to use that parameter, it has to be someone's tour of what the cost would be for a free and adequate education.
So Ian, is there... Is that the... So the RSAs define the cost of free and adequate education for a student in New Hampshire as around $4,000. In RSA.
And what year was that?
What year was that?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Sorry, can we have one person?
No, I'm not trying to either.
They have a...
Who's the person? I just... You know how things are so... You know more than anybody else, being on the school board, how crazy things are. And I'm just wondering... I mean, you got asked yesterday, you know what I'm saying? When was that $4,000 made as the number?
Right. I mean, that was around 1980. Don't quote me on that. But they did build in the idea of increasing that with inflation, which they could have, but they didn't. And what happened at that point? So the reason why that...
No!
The reason why that was... Wow, that was like my teacher silence, wasn't it? The reason that number was chosen, I think, is because that's actually about what towns were paying per kid. And when we look at the rate with inflation, what that would be today... Ian, you have these numbers. You didn't... That's about $7,000 per kid. So here, the proposal was for $10,000, okay? It can be done. Now, what you also need to know is that test scores have been stagnant since the 1970s, and the costs have skyrocketed. And that's in that pamphlet. There are charts and things that explain that. And why is that? Why can't we educate our kids for a reasonable amount of money? Why does that cost go up enormously every year? And as a school board, I can tell you, we have tried to keep that budget as thin as possible. And there was one year we went too thin, and we paid for it. And now we're going to go way thin. But the difference... Sorry. So that gives us an opportunity. What we did before was we tried to chip away at things. And we didn't let go of everything. We still have art teachers and music teachers. We didn't cut that all out. We could have. But those were so small in terms of the bigger budget, we thought it's not even going to make a dent. What this is going to force us to do is to step back and say, how can we do this? What's a really good way to do this? How can we base this on things we know about how people learn, so that we can keep the costs down? And so that some people on unlimited incomes, on fixed incomes, don't lose their house over property taxes going up, right? These are things to consider, too. So that's where... That's how I, at least, am thinking about this.
I think it's also fair to try to consider that people don't lose their house trying to send their kids to a public institution, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
There's our... No.
With three children, if I have to make up the difference...
You're jumping to conclusions right now.
I am jumping to conclusions.
Let's try... Let's Matt try to jump to conclusions. I mean, I guess what...
We were jumping into this, you know? You were jumping into this first.
I did not choose to jump into this. I am embracing it as an opportunity. So can you look through the brochure and tell me something that's incorrect in there?
Because that's how we are going to send out the dollars to provide a public education is incorrect, because you cannot find a school, our anchor school or any one of towns, that will do that. So it's incorrect.
We don't know that yet. We have to talk to them.
Yes, we do.
Did you all let them talk to them?
Ma'am, did you call them and talk to them last year?
Not last year.
Last budget year?
I spoke with one of our receiving districts today, and they said it's a joke.
Last year, did you call and check these numbers?
You wanted an article. We're setting the stage for me to go talk to them.
And I'm also curious about our anchor school, which you said is a term we sometimes use. We've been using the term anchor school ever since we ended our area agreement with Newport. And I'm curious about our legal agreement and our obligation to that district. What is our legal agreement with them?
We have a year-to-year contract with them. That's our agreement.
And did you already establish it for next year? We did.
We did. You know, we did, but...
An $70,000 rate for our fall.
Wait, an 11% increase, almost $18,000. People have been quoting 17, but it's 17.8, almost $18,000. They increased us by $2,000 this year.
My question is, are you making...
So they... So, Brian?
Yes or no?
Do you want me to answer the question?
Just yes or no?
Yes or no? It is a yes or no question.
That is not a yes or no question.
Yes, it is.
And...
Do we have a contract?
All right, I've been called in to the public comment.
Of course you are.
I have not... The point... You don't have to leave. I just... Oh my God. The point of this meeting is to talk about possibilities. I haven't heard anybody talk about that yet, so that's what we're going to do right now.
Do you still have any question about your contract that you're part on?
Yes.
You are part tomorrow. Somebody else is going to come back and say, how is the board's budget approved?
Right? It doesn't matter. You're still being...
I said that.
May I interrupt for just a moment?
We don't have that honor contract? Excuse me, we have an honor contract.
If anyone here has some information that compels us to reneg on the vote that was made on Saturday, legally, we will entertain it.
I want our children's future.
That's how to vote, question. Answer the question. That's the question on the table.
The majority of you in the room now were not in the room on Saturday to make voices heard then.
We were all here in the snowstorm.
Of course you were. You were in the rain, so convenient for shopping.
I haven't opened that meeting, but they can't sit on the pillow of snowstorm.
So they're handsome.
If I could add to the contract question. So we're still contracted. You're supposed to give them one-year notice to terminate the contract. However, and their requirement is to take whatever students we send, but that does not necessarily obligate us to send any students. So if they want to come to the table, negotiate a rate, then that's up to them.
No, oh, no, that's not true. The way town tuitioning works is the school... Excuse me. What we have is town tuitioning. That is under the RSAs. This is how it works. You don't have to like it, but this is how it works. The school board gets to choose which schools they provide to the parents for their choice. We... This school board, we're probably like one of the... Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. There's two already.
So being held hostage is better than being held ready.
I would like to finish explaining what town tuitioning is.
Especially if you're hostage, it's a compromise.
What are the solutions?
Okay, my question, and as everybody announced, I'm trying to stay in the middle and try to see everybody. I want to go back to your question, sir. I'm sorry, I don't know you. My name's Lynn. Your question was about the vote. And I think no matter what your side you're on this, everybody agrees that this amount is just so low with what we've got to do. No matter what side you're on. And I guess my question, I totally understand about a vote happening and the people that are there. I would have loved to have been there. I have some health issues, some family issues. The snow, I couldn't come. However, I guess when there is an assumption morally, and I think legally, that when something is brought to a vote, it is something that is doable.
So to the mind, people can't do it. I'm not... I'm not also.
Sorry. I... I'm a teacher. I speak that.
You're just one.
I could hear you while listening.
So what I'm saying is, I'm not here to flip about the vote. The... My big question, when it was asked, is this legal? I think there's a legal, moral, and community obligation that when something is brought for a vote, it is doable. I'm not going to go to town meeting and say, I want my dog to have a position on the school board, because that's ridiculous. Do I think people have a right to say, wow, this is a lot of money, let's cut this down yet? Yes. But for all of us to be here shaking...
No, not all of you. Half of you. Go on.
I... Whatever. But even the people, I think, that want a low budget are thinking, how are we going to do this if you care of the kids? I'm just saying, I think there has to be a balance where something's not just voting because, here you go, let's cut it in half, but how much can we cut and still be able to do what we've got to do? And I think that's why I agree about the vote. And I think that's why you see so many people here. Because had we known it was going to be so crazy, we would have moved hell and high water and gone here.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I could respond?
If anybody has any questions, go up to the mic, please.
I'll respond quickly on the question of whether or not it's possible. I've had a couple more days to think on this after the vote. And I believe, I really do, that it is feasible to live within this budget if we try hard enough. And the reason I note this is because Montessori is doing it right now, and Mount Royal is doing it right now, and every other charter school in the entire state is doing that right now. They all charge $8,750 for their tuition. So to say that we are incapable of doing this while other people all around us are doing it every week, I think is more of a failure of imagination.
But, sir, those people have a charter school already established, which is being supported.
No, that's all they ever get. They get that amount from the state, the charter school. They don't get anything to start for the... per kid.
Well, my other grandchildren in town...
But can you go up to the microphone?
Sure. Oh my gosh. I said I'm not going to talk. I said I was going to hold on to me. I was going to say, but again, those parameters are set. I have another set of grandchildren right now who live in town who will be going to a charter school in Peterborough. And it is done that way. And it's got grants. It's got time to set up. It has its, you know, it's got money. It also is part of the state. But that happened first. That was available. They said, okay, we're ready. Then it was an offer to the public. I'm not saying charter schools aren't great, but that is a lot of work to set up a charter school. And we don't have that for five months from now. That's...
That's fine. And that's only one of the actions on the table. Thank you.
I took guys at your word as to what the session was, the work session. I'm not looking at this as a complaint session. I don't think it should be. This budget is state economy. It's done. You're not going to give me enough time for everything I did. I'll come upstairs here, so I guess I'd like to get to a couple of big ones that I feel concerned. A lot of people have a nostalgic connection to the Craig School. And I'm not among them, but I understand that people do. I would say two things about that. I'm sure the board would be happy to keep things running as it is if we can find a way to run it for less than $10,000 a student. That is the challenge I would put out to anybody who has left that nostalgic need to keep the Craig Middle School running. Find a way to run it for that cost. It's not impossible. It's a silly term. That's like saying flying wasn't possible in 1920. Alternatively, if it's the building that we think is really needed, we could possibly hire somebody private, sorry, or somebody, to run that as a sort of satellite school for us. That's just one idea. Again, not to go wrong, because you're going to be cut off my mic, but...
You're not yelling. It's all good.
Okay. Don't be fair. Come on. More online learning. The teacher unions were happy to push for online learning during COVID as long as they got the dues and their paychecks. We can do an online learning thing, perhaps even rotate in and out population of the school building to raise its virtual capacity. That's one thing we could consider. It does seem to work. Long term, we should negotiate with some of the private schools particularly that are under the $10,000 mark, may want to spend, having trouble doing it. Maybe we could cut a deal and get some tuition breaks and work things that way. I know it's struggling to expand. You talked about ending the agreement of $10K. We use the term anchor school. Now it's more an abstraction based on our budget, $10,000 a student. We should consider demanding full or partial tuition refunds where students do not need achievement for schools we tuition them to. We should bring this. If a federal grant is getting us $100,000, it costs us $300,000 to implement, we should prop it. I would also say, go start with making a reversal of Aaron's point of the meeting about looking at bringing homeschoolers in. Perhaps we need to do the opposite. I'm a homeschooler, and so many homeschoolers feel they can't do it or they can't do all of it. Maybe if we provide them a model of help. Maybe you got a woman who's bad at math, can do everything else. We could do a hybrid partial system that would allow them to homeschool, certainly if they really want to. I was amazed to live there. There's 20 people, and Brian's doing that. That's wonderful news. I got others. I'll email them to you later.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Chris. I have a kindergartner, and he's been thrilled with his experience at Craig Middle School. He's reading big in my books. He's writing giant sentences. It's wonderful. He's loved. It's a great place. Have you been to the school recently? I just questioned, have you come in and experienced the wonderful environment that's over there? It doesn't seem that way to me, not from my experience. We had a sustainability committee with Aaron involved, making a recommendation on Saturday that we should wait for a year to make any drastic changes. And I just don't understand how it could take due to votes that we should make this gigantic drastic change that puts our children in jeopardy when that was the recommendation.
All right, we didn't vote on it. It wasn't us.
I don't know that that's true. I'm sorry. Do we have record of that?
What do you mean by that?
It was voted on.
This was the town meeting on Saturday.
Right, I understand. And Jody, was that you abstained from the vote?
I did.
You made up, but I don't believe that the whole board did.
We did.
I did as well. I had way too many questions to be able to comfortable with.
I mean, regardless of this, I mean, it was raised by the public after meeting. It was not presented by the board, and it was fairly overwhelming. I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, you don't have to...
It was. It was defended by the board. So the folks that voted for it on Saturday, you made a pitch that this was a better plan than the budget that was presented in the Warren article, whether or not you voted for it. And I'm sorry, that was my misunderstanding, but...
I recall doing very much speaking, although in that setting.
I spoke. I did. I said something like this provides us an opportunity to really try to do something good and focus on the academic achievement. This isn't just about the money. Because academic achievement is not very good right now. Do you know that?
In this short time span, there is no way we can be putting our children's interests in line with this giant change. It's too soon.
Well, and I'm glad so Ian put this thing... I mean, this is awful. I'm going to do this, but... Those who say it cannot be done should not interrupt the person doing it.
So our kids are going to be home next year with no school.
You don't know that.
You really don't know that. So we've talked with the Commissioner of Education and people in the Department of Ed and DRA and the Secretary of State. I mean, I was on the phone most of the day today. And the Commissioner gave us some... Gave me some ideas for what we could do. There are learning pods that are run by certified teachers to help kids learn. That's at the cost of $5,000 per kid. We can set those up. That's one possibility. And they actually run from K to 12, and there's even more options than that. So that's quite fascinating.
Say that one more time. Learning?
Can you put that on the microphone, Tom?
Learn... I just missed what you said. Could you repeat it? That's all.
Learning pods, there's Prenda Learning Pod and Kai Learning Pod, K-A-I. Those are the two that we're looking at. We don't know more details than that, but we know that this is one model that, that could provide an opportunity for kids.
Is that online?
No, I think I referenced it.
What do you mean? Oh, no, it's in person. Yeah.
Where would they be at?
Right here.
Do you still have a building?
I can hear.
They would come to your building, I believe.
Keep in mind, we've had two days to be thinking about this. And we're, we're really only brainstorming at this point. So literally, nothing that we're saying is set in stone as far as we're moving this route. We're just trying to come up with some ideas to work under the budget that we've been given to work under.
And, and once we can...
My husband.
And once, and once we can find a budget that seems to work, then we'll look at the details. And if we can't, maybe we have a special town meeting again to say, you know what, we can't do it for 10 grand, we need this amount. As possible, that is one of the possibilities. Next question.
So I don't have a child at the village school, but I am a special educator. So my confusion is, I work a lot with the legal documents. You are legally required to provide a free and appropriate education for every child at the least restrictive, which is the home public school. And so with the budget of $10,000, you're assuming that every child's neurotypical can learn exactly the same, and use the exact same educational budget. How are you accounting to make sure you legally, ideally, have the eligibility of making sure that students who have additional costs because of disabilities still get their free and appropriate education?
We'd have to be able to budget for that, that's exactly...
But how can you set, so my question is, how can you set predetermined budget not accounting for the cost of students with disabilities, saving $10,000 per student, when that's a legal requirement to provide? So how do you set a budget before...
So what you're telling us is, what I'm hearing is that we should make sure to include in the budget that we come up with over the next, what is it now, 18 days? Because that's our deadline, that that has to include special ed. Thank you, we will.
What's the plan? So if we're talking about the plan?
The plan, we just started thinking about this two days ago. We are coming, we have 20 days to come up with a plan.
I'm just confused how you can propose a budget that you're not sure meets the law.
We need to propose a budget.
So I would...
What's your question?
How are you going to make sure every single person's education is accounted for if you don't? So I get, you might not have voted for it, but you certainly knew about it. So how are you making sure that it's going to be secured?
We're getting there, we're going to work on this plan. That's what we're doing.
That's what the working meeting is for today, is to start talking about a plan.
I have a couple of clarifying questions. So I said I have a couple of clarifying questions. So we know that we have a couple of schools that, for our school choice, or you refer to this tuition, town tuition, not school choice, takes our children for $10,000, one of those being Mount Royal, one of those being Montessori. Could you, as the board, decide to use all of our tax dollars to send our students to Mount Royal, even Catholic?
Not Mount Royal?
No, we cannot. Not Mount Royal, okay. So I also, I wanted to clarify that I did speak to Chrissy Lippel. So Montessori is actually full, they won't be taking any additional kids. So if we can't send them to Montessori either, are you also then obligated to provide the transportation costs associated with transporting our kids through at least four students?
Through eighth grade.
Through eighth grade, just to that happen, maybe a fee that we need to...
Absolutely, transportation, yes.
And could you clarify what you said, Kevin? I think about renewing the anchor school contract that we currently have. Did you say that we would do that, or might need to do that?
I don't think I said anything about the anchor school contract. I was talking, I was responding to somebody else asking.
So we currently have a contract with Newport, which we have had since we pulled from SA 43, I believe.
The current contract was signed in 2020, and it lasts through 2023.
Till 2023.
With the assumption that every year it will be renewed.
Right, so at least till 2023, we're using that school.
That is correct.
So if all of us that have K through 12th grade decide to pull our kids from your $10,000 school and I move her to Newport at $17,000, are you going to be required to pay that fee?
No, you're not allowed, you're not allowed to pay that. That's not part of the deal, that's right. We can't...
We're not allowed to require you to pay.
Right, so if we decide to do that... No, actually, $800,000 would get soaked up real quick. That $17,000 reward.
Excuse me, I want to restate that. We have to provide a free option.
Which currently is Newport, that's the one that we offer. That's what we choose to use as our...
No, I mean, Sunapee is also a free option. And so is Montessori, they're all free options right now.
And are you required to offer a free option that was willing to accept and required to accept all of our students? Because it's my understanding, Sunapee is not required to accept all of our students.
Nobody's required to. Newport says they will, but it's not a requirement. There is, I mean, that was a legal conversation I had today, too. He looked up, there is nothing in the, in the statutes that says you need to have a school of record for a town tuitioning program.
But my question still stands. So if several of us choose to move our students to Newport at $17,000, you will in fact pay that?
So what we, what we have to come up with right now, and... We will have to either approach Newport and try to renegotiate price. We will have to figure out an option for getting our kids schooled in town somehow. We have to figure out what the options are, what is available to us, and what we can reorganize at this point. The only way out of that is for the vote that happened on Saturday to be reversed. And I don't know a legal process of doing that. If, if somebody finds a legal process of doing that and brings it to us and compels us to put another vote out there, that's, that's, that's a path. I don't know of a path to that, to that anymore right now. So right now, the end, the, the position we're in is we have $800,000 to spend on education this year, and we've got to figure out a plan.
And are you guys going to have a backup, a Plan B in the event that that $800,000 is soaked up strictly in tuition when these other schools do not choose to accept our students for 10? Are we going to discuss that?
We're going to get as far as we can tonight. We're not saying that we're going to have a plan at the end of today, but we're certainly going to be working on it very hard over the next couple of weeks that we have to submit a budget to the state.
So I actually don't have a question, I just have a blanket statement. So my son was a junior at my school when they started doing the online for COVID that the previous man discussed. He's an honor, high honor roll student, three sport athlete, you know, honor society, got into an amazing college from Newport School. But when COVID hit, and he had to do online schooling, it had a serious detriment to his education. Not because he's not a great student, but because it's hard to do school on V-Lax or online or at a charter school.
It's not for everybody.
And the fact is that you guys are asking for, from what I can see, it seems that you're asking for a blanket, $10,000 to cover everybody who can be the perfect student and do well and...
Or, or parents.
No, you didn't, but what I'm saying is, $10,000 doesn't cover an education. So my, well, I thought you speak, so I would appreciate it if you let me. Thank you.
So I'm asking one, I just have three questions.
I just came from my house because I cannot hear anything over the Zoom call except for Jody interrupting everyone else trying to speak. And no one is answering my chat. Asking for people to hand the mic over or to speak closer into the mic. Also, why the teachers not here? I was told by a teacher that they didn't feel comfortable coming because they don't live in the community.
I know, Jody sent an email out to Frank and... Saying, please pass on to the staff if we would like to have anyone here that wants to come.
Because it does feel like the teachers are the ones being attacked here, and they should be invited to defend themselves. Well, if you're all concerned about how much money we're spending at school and our kids aren't learning enough because of these apparent test scores. Anyway, I have more to say, but I'll get in line. I just want to say, everyone speak closer to the mic, don't be afraid to be obnoxiously loud, because no one on Zoom can hear anything, I swear.
But so, as I'm saying, you are, you have given a blanket statement that we need a blanket $10,000 to educate every child, and that there is the options of charter schools and V-Lax and online, and you can do these pods where you go and have someone teaching you in your own building or whatever. Those things aren't going to work for everybody. And so if you guys are starting this, which I have heard in many different meetings of charter schools and this and that, those things don't work for everybody. And your job as the school board is to make sure that every child in Croydon gets a free education and that it's adequate for those children. And that is what you are here to do.
Well, one quick point, we're not saying, I don't think any of us wants a one-size-fits-all thing, we're not trying to suggest that everybody...
You don't have the budget for anything else.
We're not trying to suggest that everybody should go do online learning. The point being that there are people that can educate kids for far less than $23,000 and far less than $10,000. So that just means it's possible, and we got to figure out how to make it happen.
So I just want to say thank you. You really brought up a lot of the points that I was going to mention. So I, you know, I'll keep it kind of brief. But a couple of people before me mentioned the special education. And when I do the math on the budget, the special education plus the, the cost to keep our administration and our business administrator, which are all things that we are legally required to do, is around $190,000. So now we have to kind of take that off of the $800,000. So when everyone's up here saying that it's $10,000 per student, it's not. Because legally, by the state of New Hampshire, we have to pay for special education, and we have to pay for an administration. We have to pay for those two things. So we have to take that off of the top of that money now.
And don't forget, we've had adult district placements that cost well over $100,000.
Oh, and guess what? We have another one coming in. So we have another huge special education cost coming in that we can also legally are forced to take off that $100,000. So our $10,000 per student, which why can't we possibly find a way to educate every kid for $10,000? Just can't, just got dropped down to about seven. And I'm so glad that Montessori is able to do that. They're the only school in the area. But they don't have the same legal obligations of having to educate every single student and special needs students and a lot of these other costs. So that's why they're so cheap. We run under different parameters because it's called a free, you know, a public, a free inadequate education for everyone. So the other thing is... See, yeah, we're good at all. Free, free inadequate education, I mean, so that's what brings me to, you know, exactly what, what you said and a couple of other people said. You know, I, I always kind of scoffed and giggled when you guys were like, oh, V-Lax, you know, we could just do V-Lax. There's all these great programs out there online at previous meetings, you know? And I always kind of, I always kind of giggled to myself, but I never really said anything. But really, I mean, as a, as a high school teacher, I've seen V-Lax in action. It's, it might work for a very small percentage of kids. And there is that philosophy that was presented to the, during the meeting, which said, you know, if you, all you got to do is teach a kid to read, and then they'll just teach themselves magically. And I think that might work for that tiny little percentage. But we live in reality, and this isn't like, you know, this is, we need to look at the reality of the situation and what we're actually up against. So I know that if you're saying to me that, you know, you're going to provide my students and my children with a free and adequate education, some learning pod or some online schooling is just not going to cut it. Because that's not adequate for me and my children. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, you keep on mentioning how academic achievement has remained stagnant. Well, you know, throwing money isn't going to make rocket science. I mean, education, you know, kids are going to stay learning what they're learning. Some are going to be high achievers, some are going to be low achievers. But I think our numbers might be better if we didn't throw a friggin' monkey wrench into our school system every few years and then scramble around trying to pick up the pieces. We did this four years ago, and it took forever. It took forever to try and fix the goddamn problem. And it was a tough problem to fix, and we stuck to it, and we finally made that thing run again. And once again, we're throwing another goddamn monkey wrench into the whole thing and blowing this up. And it's sad to see, because I worked my ass off the last four years trying to fix it and make it look good, and now it's all ownership.
I'd like to hear Ian's response to that.
It's me again. I wanted to just point out two things from the conversation. The first one was numbers on test scores. Now, I know I'm the stageless on the stage, but even 20 years ago, when numbers were very similar to what they are now in Croydon School, we did not publish in the newspapers our numbers for the simple reason that there are very few children in each grade comparatively to other schools in the state. So what happens is, if you have one high child, you're going to get a high score. If you have one child, because all children are testing, who for learning problems doesn't test well, and you get a low score, it's going to make your scores low. So you have to be very careful when looking at an area like Croydon and looking at those test scores. They're not telling you necessarily the individual stories of what's going on. That is the first thing. Secondly, someone mentioned something about if a child isn't performing, maybe the tuition should be lower. Well, it was an adjustment a few years ago when we went to school choice. But we've, we've done it, and it's, and parents embraced it, and we worked on what was right for our kids. I now have two grandchildren in Sunapee who are consistently on honors, who have done great things in those schools, and they have thrived. And somehow, I believe, like in past years when schools were used, there was some kind of grandfathering in. And I hate to see these kids who have found their path, these men... And I'm talking now, besides the school kids, I'm talking about the kids who are now in older grades. To now take those families who have found their way and their children who have found the way in their education, and now we're going to cut them at the knees because of a, of a, of a budget. And again, it all comes back to, was it, was it a doable number? And I don't know, I don't know lots. I just know what's right for kids. I've spent my life learning what's right for kids and families. And I think we really need to look, you always, no matter what, you always have to start with where people are. You can't start with where you want them to be or where they used to be. You have to start with where we are now. And why I'm saying this is if something happens, and I know everybody in this room in some way has some ideas. I don't know how we're going to do it. But if this, this thing cannot be legally changed, can we? And this is just a rhetorical question. Now that our budget is like this, look at grants. Because, or look at some way, I mean, just because that's the budget doesn't mean that you can't vote, that it's okay to accept other money. And I'm thinking, maybe we really need to scramble. Because I, we cannot let these kids who have spent...
How many years, she was four years?
That we've done this, and now we found our way, set us back to ground zero. Because these are, and, and keep in mind, these are the same kids that missed two years of normalcy with COVID. Because this is just another, another hatchet in the tree.
Um, yeah, okay. Loud voices of passion do not an argument make. I would never suggest to anybody that's a Croydon resident to leave, leave the room. But I will say this, check the can't do at the door, okay? The one area that I'm in complete agreement with Vinay Sears
The one area that I'm in complete agreement with Vinay Sears against this budget is, is that this is going to be a challenge. Tweaks, adjustments will not work. Nobody ever thought they would. So we need to drop that line of thinking immediately. Secondly, the idea that Montessori is kicking special ed kids to the curb and not doing anything with them is incorrect. They don't, they're not fed a bunch of angels from on high to work with. They work with their everyday kids, like every other school. They manage. There's too many excuses behind the failures of our public system. Excuses for the high cost, excuses for the failures. And let's be fair about another point, Newport is not exactly cranking on road scholars. So I don't want to hear about inadequate education. If only we could throw a ton of money at these corrupt public schools and everything will be fine. No, it's not fine. We're getting crap results in many cases, and it's disingenuous to pretend that having business as usual with its attendant ridiculous costs is somehow gonna make the educational profile okay. It's not. We have a problem now anyway. You can ignore the money problem entirely. We have an educational problem, and we need innovative solutions. This budget demands innovative solutions, because as I said, I completely agree, it won't be done by incremental changes. We have to have innovation in this thing. So I say, get on board, let's get as far as we can. We need to innovate. There's a lot of ideas. I have 13, they probably have about 50 between them, and this is day two.
Thank God my children are the guinea pigs now.
You're right. Thank God my family's the financial guinea pig. Don't interrupt. Jim, Jim.
If you don't like the tax rate, why don't you go to town and have a lower tax rate?
You won't find one, that's why.
Really?
Really? Because I looked when I moved here.
There aren't thousands of more than.
Not many. Not many. Ours has been upped in the past few years, and it's still lower than most of the places I looked into. Speaking of which, I don't know how to change this mic, so I'm gonna tiptoe. Speaking of which, you can thank my son as the guinea pig that came through here four years ago and upped everything, because my son was diagnosed being on the autism spectrum. We don't have a preschool. He was going to Newport Head Start. Newport Head Start was prepared to offer him services, but the current superintendent of Croydon had bad blood with Newport. This was their words, not mine. So they didn't want to accept any Newport services that would have been cheaper and less quality given. My son was outsourced to James House. He's the reason y'all's taxes spiked up, okay? Because the budget went soaring, because my son couldn't be dealt with at Newport Head Start, because they were willing to offer services that Croydon was not willing to accept, because they came from Newport. He went to James House. Montessori, I know, has a history of at least being allowed to reject children with special needs, because I now am an RBT working with a family who had already paid their deposit for their autistic child to go to Montessori, and then they recommended he go to James House instead. So what Tom brought up was a valid point. One second, Jody. I did want to ask too, though, why hasn't it not brought up that Ian Underwood, Jody's husband, is a selectman? So how did you not know that any of this was coming up in the weeks that you're planning for this budget?
Okay, 'cause, is that a rhetorical question?
No, I'm asking legitimately, did you not know about this?
I didn't know that until a few days before the meeting.
Until a few days before the meeting?
Sorry, let me answer, let me fully answer. He didn't know about, so there's two parts. So at last year's town meeting, it was actually in the minutes, it says that he brought it up last year. And it was in the final article, where, you know, it didn't have to do with money. And if I might, Jim Pesci said he would second such a motion if it were brought up. And then Ian just forgot about it. And last week?
I won't explain it then. You're not gonna believe me. You think I'm a politician, but I'm not.
Oh, it's because I'm a freestater. Great. Free freestaters lie. Perfect. Okay. So last week, Ian came up with the idea of doing it during, to modify the amount, and he wanted to find out if he could and so on. It was, it was just a few days before the meeting. Total truth. What can I tell you?
Anyway, so granted that we believe that, let's go on that thesis. Okay. I want to talk, okay, it's, I want to talk about my personal experience having a son on the spectrum going to a public school. If my son, you're not gonna interrupt me again, are you?
No, I had a question for you that you haven't let me ask yet.
Okay, what is your question?
My question is, when did that happen? Because we never heard about this on the board. Why didn't you come to the board if you weren't happy with that setup?
Because I didn't know that I could. This was four years ago, and I went to the superintendent at the time.
So Karen? It's Patty. Okay. So the current superintendent is not the one that you should be mad at. He's a new one.
I'm not mad at him. Frank's great. Frank's amazing.
He is not the person that had that decision made over. I just want to clarify that.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if the same problem's going to happen, you're gonna be in the same situation again. I'm just playing it out there.
I want to clarify your statement. You said the current superintendent has bad blood with the Newport.
The current one at the time. I'm sorry. My mistake, I didn't mean to throw Frank on a bus, that's Frank's amazing. This was back at the time.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so my experience as a mom with an autistic child with severe learning disabilities, if we did not have the Croydon School District, and he went to somewhere like Newport, he would be failing miserably right now. He struggled a lot during those two years of COVID. You know, one of the biggest things about autism is the whole, you know, social disability, not being able to really interact with people, learn how to interact with people. How are you supposed to do that over a computer? And like, the only offering I can give him is, you know, myself, my husband, and his little sister as his peers to interact with. You know, I'm less concerned about his education at this point, and more concerned about his social abilities. That's something we're working on in school. And the school has an amazing, amazing social community. Like, my, my son, I'll be the first one to admit, has been the disruptor in class before, and has been the kid that everyone worries about having as a parent. And his teachers have been the sweetest people, and his classmates have been the sweetest, and they've all said, "Everybody loves him. Nobody has a problem with him." Okay, I, I worked at a daycare in Newport, none of these kids.
I need you to cut it short. I need you to be quiet for one second so I can get my statement out. I asked for a two-minute limit on people, and you missed.
Did you time anyone else? Do we time anybody else? Has anyone else been keeping time? Good, I didn't think so. So, I worked at a daycare in Newport. My son came with me in the mornings, didn't even interact with anybody else. Excuse me, one second. This is relevant.
I'm not trying to stop you.
Then why are you putting up your hand in the soft suit?
I just want to say, we've just talked, we're not going to make this a working meeting. We would like to make this a public comment meeting, so that everyone can get their voice heard.
I understand that. This is my public comment.
Yes, yes, and I want you to, I want you to continue. I'm just letting everyone know we're changing.
Okay, if anyone else in the audience wants to say something to me, say it to me directly, okay? Tell me to shut up if I'm going too far. Can I continue now?
Yes, please.
I worked at a daycare in Newport where my son came with me in the mornings, didn't even interact with the kids, barely said anything to them. These kids say, "Oh, I hate that kid. He's so weird, he's so annoying." What if my son was thrown to the wolves with those kids? He didn't even interact with them, and those kids were just throwing him away like he was trash. So why don't, instead of looking at these arbitrary test scores that we've already seen could be interpreted in many different ways, why don't we look at the mental health of the kids that we're serving and provide a better mental health basis and a love of learning? My son loves school. Do you think that he would love school if he went to a school with kids who say they hate him? This is the thing that we need to be concerned about. They're gonna catch up intellectually, they're gonna learn the things they need to learn, but if they don't have the social skills and the emotional intelligence to deal with people in the real world, then they're gonna turn out like all the folks in Newport. And you've seen how it is over there. Isn't that kind of the reason why we left? I thought we wanted better for our kids. And now we're going backwards, because we care about test scores, we don't care about the human being. And what do we judge as a success or a failure? Those aren't numbers, those are kids. Is your kid a failure because of their test scores? Do you all have kids?
Yes.
Do you want them talked about that way? Do you want them talked about that way?
Absolutely not.
Exactly.
Hello, my name's Eva Johnson. Just a couple quick comments. I get, I get very frustrated with the idea of, it's 2022, we're still talking about, we'll come to the meeting if, well, we should know in 2022 that there's a lot of people that are not comfortable enough to come to a meeting like this, and we probably should figure out some new ways for their voices to be heard. So there's that. Second piece, you guys are elected school board members. I have a two-year-old, so this is a little new to me. So, right, elected? Yeah. So my question to you guys is morally, ethically, et cetera, are you required to research?
He took the mic, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Are you required to research things on social, emotional development of children, et cetera? I could go on forever.
Our job as school board members is to make sure that the school district is run well under the budget.
Okay, so you don't do any research on any of that, and you don't compare any of that research, you don't look at numbers based on that research or anything else?
I've personally done some research on some things, because I was interested in them, but no, it's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick question. Was the meeting the other day offered on Zoom at all?
Was the what? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Was the meeting the other day offered to view on Zoom as this one is?
Town meeting, no.
No?
No. Why not? Jody opted to do this because she saw some suggestions of it on social media.
So he said it out.
She opted to go ahead and do it.
That, that's great.
And our regular school board meetings are far generally nonviolent.
Yes, yes, I know. I've participated via Zoom, I just told it was being a little, I guess, overly evolved per se. As the father of two sons, fifth grade and 11th grade respectively, I don't understand how you can say that music, welding, sports, and just general socialization, I mean, it's sociology. It's not that complicated. We want our children socialized. In Newport, you do. I'm wearing a Newport shirt right now, because I love the community. I love this community. But it's really a black eye and a bruise on the ass when we do this. It's one thing to maybe alter your budget, it's a whole different thing to decimate it completely, and I'm done. That's the night, polite.
Sorry, I'm back, it's all behind me, so. Last time I spoke, I was brutally recommended to leave town, because I dared to disagree with the mom's voice. The reason being that the taxes are so laud-cried. Yes, they are laud-cried, and I'm keenly aware of it. A big part of why they are low, for those of you who are new to the town, is because we got school choice. We got school choice, I worked on it for a long time, and who started that?
They were lovely.
You're a look, no, they weren't. School choice, that was there. And I, what I see now in the people that have the can't do attitude, which I wish humbly we would just get rid of, because it's not doing any of us any good, okay? Is the same impossible, it'll ruin the town, we all hate it, talk, that I had to endure for eight years when school choice came around. The same nonsense from the same people in many cases, that thought it was impossible, and that the whole town would hate it, and it would be a smoldering crater by now. Now what do we have? We have school choice, people love it, more than half the students, if I'm correct on that? Yeah, are using it in some form or another, and it's made Croydon the envy of the state. I'm talking. Get to the mic before he likes to speak. We can do it again, there's no reason that this can't succeed, except that the lack of will and the lack of imagination. I am delighted at the makeup of our board. And no, I'm not sucking up to you guys, I just think that if anyone can pull us off, it's you three. And please do it, there are ways to do it. Do not pay attention to the can't do's. Almost every objection can be worked around, and we can do it. And I'm sure you're committed to it. I, Jody, I'm sure you're on the phone, you're probably with me for a long time. So please, make it happen. Thank you.
My name's Angie Bolleone. I was a school board member for eight years. I served alongside Jody and Jim for a long time through withdrawing from the early agreement in Newport, implementing school choice, fighting the state to include private schools in that. And I was very proud of that, still very proud of that. And I can't help but be completely discouraged that all of that is now in jeopardy. Don't. Because everybody in this community that has children takes advantage of school choice in one way or another, whether their kids still go to Newport or anywhere else, that we have allowed them, we have told them, Jody, that they can choose any school they want, and we will make it work. And now, budget, we are going to be forced into making choices for our kids to go to schools that we may not choose. Please stop. Do it. No, but you're questioning me. I just, let me make my statement. I just won't look at you. We're gonna be forced into making a choice for our kids, not a choice, we're forced into schools for our kids that are going to take them for this tuition. And that might be Montessori, which only goes to eighth grade.
Which is completely fall.
Which is completely fall.
At state.
Or Mount Royal, which is a Catholic school and fall, and can deny any student. So all that work that you did, that Jim did, and he's gonna just remember me, so I wouldn't go there, is now jeopardized. And I, I, all of my pride is, like, like I said, I'm completely discouraged by this. I am ashamed, embarrassed by this irresponsible and reckless budget cut that was made by your husband. I, when we were talking about school choice, we were very transparent, we had, I can't even tell you how many meetings till 11 o'clock at night on the weekends. So everybody knew what was going on. Not everybody liked it, but everybody knew what was going on. It was not sprung on people at a meeting where it was also going to be voted on. It just, it wasn't. This was done completely recklessly and irresponsibly.
And so I just have a question now. So I'm thankful that you've opened this up for comments for people, because I feel like everybody needs to get it off their chest, how you, these people who are, who have voted for this, how they're treating the other people in the town, and how they didn't have to do that when their kids went to school and things like that. So I think it's great that people are getting to say their piece. But I do have a question. I heard Jim stating that he had 13 different ideas. You have said you had many, you have many ideas. The only two ideas that have been brought up is a charter school and an online school, a V-Lax school. Those are the only two suggestions. So if we have some more suggestions that people in this room, that are now stuck with the decision that only, what, 20 people made or something?
24, I think.
That 24 people made for the entire 700-person town, I would like to hear those ideas, so that I could have, do a little research, so that I could help out, so that I have more than V-Lax, which will not work, and some charter school that is 50 miles away.
Why do you not barely get internet in this town?
Exactly.
I don't think anybody on campus is gonna be advocating for everyone being banned on internet. I would absolutely put my foot down to give such a proposal.
I am, can we just, give me at least four right now that I can go home for the next week and I can, and I can research, because you said next week is a meeting?
Well, somebody said it, again, we haven't heard it yet.
Okay.
It's not posted, look for the post.
Four, or five, give me five. Let's move it. Five ideas, other than V-Lax and online school.
So I don't think any of us mentioned either of those. Other people in the audience did, because there is.
That's what I'm saying. I know that. Those are the only things I've mentioned tonight.
Fair. Well, our plan was to actually talk about this tonight, but everybody seems like we just wanna get.
I understand, and they deserve that, right? Because you guys really blind-sided them. So please, go ahead, five.
That's fine.
Five.
So I did mention these learning pods, and they are in person.
V-Lax is in your husband's budget, by the way?
Yeah, my husband has a number, but anyway, please, get in line if you want to.
Learning pods won't work, we already discussed that, so I need a different one.
Wait, for your kids, maybe?
Correct.
Okay.
And Mike, you are legally responsible to give my child an adequate free education, so that won't work, so start again.
So, how about? All right, I see, I have a question to turn around to you, but how about the kids who don't work in the public schools? Are we providing the right environment for them?
I'm asking for five options.
I know, but I'm throwing that out there.
Right, well, I'm asking for five options, and the pod is already against, and V-Lax is already against, so we can't do those.
Well, we want to, we do want to negotiate with the existing contracts. We want to talk to them to bring the tuition down.
Okay. Okay, so that's one.
I think I mentioned that already.
Okay, that's one.
I have $10,000, I want to buy a 45-dollar package.
Right. So there's one. I just need some ideas to research.
Well, so actually, our idea tonight was to brainstorm and figure things out. We've had two days to do this. I don't have 15 ideas for you right now. Absolutely not.
Well, I, I, okay, so. When was the one with 13?
I heard you say two.
Jim said it's two ideas, so I'm just trying to get some, something to think of. And unfortunately, your husband is the one that brought the idea up, so I'm looking to you, thinking you must know something more than I do.
Do you think I planned your books? Because you think I planned before Saturday, but I.
I think, I think that you and your husband have had many discussions about education, so you probably have some ideas that you could bring to me.
I think it's a collective interest either way, that.
I didn't vote.
Five?
All right, so, so.
Just some ideas.
So you want to know what I think about education?
So I want to know what I can research to look for solutions that will take $10,000 per student and give them a free and adequate.
So tell me about learning pods, can you, have you researched them already?
No, I know what you just said to me, where they will come to your, to your building.
To your house, like, let's say it was Creighton Village School, it would be in that building, it would be like going to school. There would be a teacher there, helping kids on an individual basis with what they're ready for when they're ready for it.
And so that includes every subject, a different person for every subject?
Yeah, they have curriculum.
A different person for every subject, I'm just, so, okay, so I will, I will research learning pods.
Look into it.
Okay, learning pods, there's one.
So there's Prenda is one name to look for, and.
Is that a, is that a learning pod?
P-R-E-N-D-A, yes.
Prenda, okay.
Yep, and it's endorsed by the State Department of Ed, and Kai, K-A-I.
And so, I'm just, you have looked into.
And they have two different, you started again, two days, please give that to me.
But the building, if we go to Creighton Village School, we're still running Creighton Village School, and we're still keeping the upkeep, and one thing that was brought up to earlier when you were speaking of this thing, is the cost that it takes to run a building. So, mind you, heating fuel has gone way up for all of us, so obviously tuition is going to be aware.
Yep.
And electricity, way up, so, so is, so is the, so is the building cost for that. Everybody's, everything's going up, so prices are gonna go up, so Creighton Village School, you're still heating that, putting electricity in there, running water, all of that stuff, maintenance, you're still, so you're still paying for Creighton Village School, you just don't wanna pay for regular teachers, you wanna pay for learning pod teachers to come to.
They cost $5,000 per kid.
Okay, which is fine, but you're still gonna have all those other costs, and you're still gonna have the cost of getting these kids, and this is gonna go from kindergarten.
So think about that for a second, so if we, if we had $5,000 per kid for all of our 70, 80 kids, whatever that is. Can I speak?
Right.
Then, then we have half of that budget to cover the building costs and transportation and special ed.
So, and so, so all of those, all of those students can fit into that building, all of the, and this is the stuff, I just, I wanna look at it. So, Prenda, I wanna look at it, and I know that you're irritated, and you're thinking like, I'm totally against it, or whatever.
I like that you're asking.
I honestly, I think this is ridiculous, but I am willing. I think what has happened is a complete catastrophe, and I think it's morally wrong. But, if we're stuck with it, give me ideas that I can find.
We will come to you with ideas, again, two days into it, we have a few, we don't have many. And we will publicize them as we have them, as we're thinking about it.
Okay, so we can count on you, that when you come up with an idea, you're going to make sure that every person in this town gets notice of it.
I don't know how to reach every person in this town, do you?
Yeah, I know, there's many, many ways.
Sorry, I can't hear anybody.
You can mail things out to people, and I'm pretty sure that they're mailing out messages for every single person that lives in this town.
We do have that, how often do you want to mail it?
I wanna know when you come up with something, and I wanna research it.
You got it.
And I think that, I think.
Is that gonna come out of the budget?
Of course. How else can it happen? Oh, maybe I'll pay for it, I can do that, I can donate money to this.
So, this is, this is the whole thing, the way that it's all come about is horrible. And you're going to get everybody's things, but you're here telling me that we're stuck with this budget, and if we're stuck with this budget and we have to make it work, then you guys, you guys are the ones that, this falls on you.
We know that, and it's very scary, so thank you for your support.
I don't necessarily think it's true representation of the town.
It's on you, it's on you.
So, first, I just wanna clarify in case there were any misunderstandings, because I don't speak very well in public, I jabber and get my point mixed up. I love Newport people, I'm not saying anything against Newport people, and I know you already knew that, Kevin, but I just wanna point out there. When I refer to Newport as the whole, we know the Newport I'm referring to, okay? Well, there's reporters here and stuff, and I don't wanna get like blacklisted or something, because I mentioned Newport. Okay, just so we're on the same page.
We're good.
There's good and bad with Newport, I'm just saying, there's a reason why we left, so, okay.
You're good.
Thank you. I knew I was good with you, Kevin, I just wanted to put it out there. All right, also. See, this is my problem, I'm gonna spend two minutes trying to think of what I was trying to think about the whole time I was in line there. I don't understand why we're taking all of this school budgeting advice from the main family that we know that homeschools their kids. That that's a great choice, if you wanna do that, that's great, it would save everyone money if everyone homeschooled, except it wouldn't, because then you would have to have one person at home the whole time, probably providing an even less adequate education, because, I don't know about the rest of you, I only went to college, I don't know how to help my kid through school, I'm trying to give him a better life than the one that I had. So if you're expecting me to homeschool them, then we're definitely not gonna see a rise in these test scores later on. Also, just wanted to point out the beautiful display of artwork behind you guys, courtesy of Chris Corelli, our wonderful art teacher, and that's the big one right in front there, is my daughter Evelyn, who got displayed on there, because the art program is amazing, and the school in general is great at supporting our kids and all of their individual talents. And I think that as the school board, that's supposed to be representing the best interests of the school, we should be looking at ways to improve the school, not change the school, or even offer alternatives like homeschool or charter school. You know, if you all wanna do that, that's great, but that's not the point of a school board. The school board is there for the school that you have, to make it better, not to throw it away and try to change something altogether. And, I told you, I was gonna spend the whole time trying to remember what I was gonna say, the whole time.
You're doing good, Sam.
I'm not, but thank you, I appreciate it. If anyone wants to jump in and read my mind on what I was thinking, that'd be great, because otherwise I'm gonna stand in line again.
Do you wanna, like, think about it and jump in when you got the thought?
I did have one question I wanted to ask, of the test scores, are we looking at test scores just from the kids actually currently in school? Or are we looking at test scores of like the kids in Newport, like, how does that work? What test scores are, when we're talking about test scores, how they remain stagnant? Are we talking about, like, the standardized test for the elementary level? Are we talking about like SATs and stuff for the high school kids that have left Creighton?
So the scores that get talked about over time over the last 15 years, or a national test that New Hampshire participates in, and it's a big national test that the state, sorry, the federal department of it puts out there, and it's the scores that our kids do, it's a sampling of.
So is this our kids currently at the school right now, their test scores? Or does it include the kids that we've had that are like, you know, in other schools now, because they transferred out?
You know, we can look at state schools over the years, it's not just the current.
No, in fact, I don't know the current scores of the kids. And Creighton has very few kids, so sometimes we don't get those scores. Why are we talking about the scores being stagnant if we don't know the current scores? It's.
Ooh.
Ouch. And my question was, because if we're not.
Stagnant means over time, right?
Not today. How much time are we looking at?
50, 50 years?
Okay, and this is for just our school?
No, 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 I mean, it's the whole country under, under this type of education, yeah.
Okay, so we're attacking this type of education now, that's what we're calling it.
Well, the idea is that we need to come up with something completely different in order to keep.
But that's not the job of the school board, the school board is to represent the interest of the school community that you're in.
That's not, no.
Does my two minutes include all the times you interrupt me?
You're asking me questions.
I am asking if that includes my time. I want you to answer them, but I also don't want that to be.
That was cute.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm just saying, if we don't even know the current test scores, why is that part of this discussion? And if we do know the current test scores, we need to know, are they for the students at the school? Or are they for the students outside of the school? Because if they're outside the school, you can't necessarily blame that on our specific school budget. We have school choice, it could be any of these different schools that these kids are going to, like Newport, not saying anything.
Oh, that would be under Newport schools.
Under Newport schools would be under there.
So, we do have, we get to see the formative assessments that the kids get in Creighton Village School, and there are a good number of kids that are below proficient, and continue to be, and I don't understand.
Have we tested for this year?
These are testing scores.
Have we tested for this year?
Yeah, this is this year.
This is this year? I thought we didn't have those scores.
That's not what I said, I said when you get the state scores, the standardized test scores for the state, our numbers.
I don't care about the state, I care about our school, do we have the test scores for our school? How our kids stack up, you just said we didn't.
I said we didn't have the standardized test scores, often, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, it depends on the number of kids who take the test. That's just the way it works, somebody else got up there and explained all that before, so that, that's.
That might have been during the 10-minute drive I had to take, because I couldn't get that.
It's fine, I don't, I don't, so I'm explaining that again, but, okay. Then I just answered it in terms of the formative test scores that we've seen that the kids get in the school.
Okay, but all I'm saying is, there's been four years of upheaval trying to get to a stable point. We replaced our principal because she left, she had a different opportunity. We have a new principal this year who's doing amazing, but why not give her a chance to keep doing amazing and maybe boost those test scores? And I'm still getting mixed messages on whether or not we even have these test scores, I'm so confused right now. I don't know if anybody else is, but, right, my problem is I don't know how to do it under this new budget, right? Okay, that was.
Hi, my name is Sarah, I just, very briefly, just had a couple of questions. So I've sat in many of IEP meetings at the Creighton School, I've got three disabled sons, two attend Montessori, one just turned 3, it took us six months to find a preschool that could take him based on his needs with cerebral palsy. I just wanna know, since this meeting is being recorded on the record, will their disability services change when your contract ends or your new ideas come up? And like, I hear you mentioning learning pods, are you prepared to provide? I see Mrs. Ivy here, who provides my son services twice a week. I see Ms. Becca in the room, who's also helped out one of my sons tremendously. Do your learning pods include support services for the disabled students that you have in Creighton?
If it's written in your IEP, they legally have to buy by it. That's what pods made so much money for years ago, when my son.
I just wanna hear it from you guys, that that won't change, that no services will be taken away or shorted based on your IEP.
You ready for the answer?
I'm ready for you to stop making smirks, you are incredibly rude.
Yes, we are.
I think it's coming, I'm happy, I'm not for Tennessee school board meeting, I just moved here from Tennessee a year ago. I grew up in Creighton, moved away, I haven't lived here in 15 years, I've seen your endless smirks, your rude commentary to people who are speaking, I think you should be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you, that was amazing, I'm so sorry to step in, I just wanna comment that I went to several school board meetings before the whole epidemic thing, whatever. I was the only community member that went, I was encouraged to go. There were like two or three meetings before Jody was there, because she was on vacation. Jody showed up, and the first time I asked a question, I got a remark of, you know we're in a meeting, right? To a community member who was asking questions, trying to learn how this system works, and you guys are supposed to be helping us with that, right? And I heard, we're in a meeting, you're not supposed to be interrupting. And that's still the impression that I'm getting today with all of these very valid, and yes, I'm interrupting right now, but I asked permission, they were very nice about it. I'm just saying, is that the kind of opinion that we're trying to put out there? That this is the school board's zone, when the school board says those, and that we're just here for show, to make it look like you're listening to us, but none of our opinions actually matter?
So we're trying to listen very hard, all of us, and I apologize if my way of listening isn't the same as yours. I mean, you can think what you want about that, but my job as chair is to run the meeting. And when people are constantly interrupting or buzzing in the back, it's really hard to do that. So sometimes I ask people to hold their comments off, and I don't think that's unreasonable.
No, but I know other board members from that time that are here now, that could vouch for me about what happened and who was the one at fault, so just if you wanna ask them, Tom and Cecily would have thrown you guys.
I remember it.
I do. I remember a lot of people being on my side in that meeting.
So, Eva Johnson, again, a couple more questions, while I agree, maybe there could be some learning on how you speak to people in body language and stuff like that, because it's pretty important, regardless of what your opinion or feelings are. My question is, I believe you said that the three of you are working on some ideas, on some solutions, right?
Well, we would like to, we were supposed to tonight.
Okay, so, one of the rules that we have to abide by is, we can't collaborate on school board meetings, or school board issues outside of school board meetings.
In public.
It's basically to prevent us from colluding or whatever. I'm still learning, because I've been a school board member for all of three days.
So, so how, how do you guys do any research to research?
Well, we would have been working on that tonight, but we opted to give the public the time to have this comment, because it was clearly needed.
And we can research on our own, we would have gone away with.
You can.
Yes, we can do it on our own.
So you guys, so you guys do research on your own then, correct?
Right. Yes.
And we have to bring it to the meetings and.
Perfect.
Yes.
Because that I would love to hear.
I'll keep this brief and polite, I just wanted to remind everybody, the last time this happened, mostly I just wanted to say thank you, because you guys are a little fire when you cut a teacher and you make backdoor decisions that none of us know. To the community members that are online and here, the only way this changes is if we get more involved. Those positions expire, those positions expire, we need variety, because clearly this is what happens, okay? So Jody, you just said that you're listening really hard to everybody's ideas.
Can you talk into the microphone?
You just told us that you're listening really hard to everybody's ideas, and I'm wondering, who's taking notes?
Eric.
Okay, because I know that Kevin was just voted as the secretary.
Yeah, you didn't know he was secretary.
Just wanted to confirm. And then, really, I just have one question, which goes back to a comment I believe I heard you say earlier, Kevin, which was, you guys would reconsider this budget if you saw compelling evidence to do so? And so I'm wondering, what you would want, what would you consider?
I would need to correct your understanding of what I said.
Oh, okay, I figured probably would, but that's what I heard.
Yeah, I understand, and I did use some of those words, just not quite enough.
No.
So, I have done some research, because there were, after I posted this on Facebook, what happened at the meeting on Saturday, there were a few comments made of, this is illegal, some folks gave some statutes. I looked up those statutes, I found that the statutes that had been provided on Facebook did not apply to our situation, so I could not use those to come back to the board and say, yes, this was illegal, we have to reverse it or put it to a new vote or whatever. I can't find anything so far in my research that compels us to bring it back to the town for a new vote. What I'm saying is, if somebody out, out here can find something that compels the board to put it to a new vote, we will absolutely do so, because we would be compelled to do so.
So a demand by the people, considering that there is more than twice as many people here tonight as attended on Saturday, I attended on Saturday, and voted against the joke that Ian suggested. You know, is this compelling evidence?
Unfortunately, not by one of the other statutes that I read that said, monetary decisions can only be made by scheduled annual meetings or special meetings specifically called to do so.
So there could be a special meeting?
Is it our PAs?
No, no, okay.
Our business administrator has something to say about that. So we did talk to the Department of Revenue today, as well as legal counsel, and the meeting that was held on Saturday is a legally binding meeting. Your budget right now is $800,000. The only way that that gets overturned is if the school board petitions Supreme Superior Court in the state of New Hampshire for emergency spending. That's the only way a second meeting happens, so the school board would have to petition the state.
Can you have him present?
So, can I clarify that? Ask a clarifying question about that. So you're saying the school board would have to petition the court for emergency spending?
That is correct, if you can't, if you can't make the $800,000.
So if we can't operate under the $800,000. So it is still incumbent upon us to try to figure out a way to operate under the $800,000.
$800,000 is your budget.
But if we absolutely can't find a way, then we would have to go to the courts and ask for emergency spending.
You would have to go to the courts.
Okay.
Yeah, to authorize a second.
So that still does not give us grounds to go to the courts and say, we need to reverse this decision that was made?
No.
How do you determine whether or not the budget is working? Like, what one person might think is working might not be working for the majority of the families in Creighton. So, what, how long do we have to try to make this budget work before someone could voice a concern saying, hey, this actually isn't working? Like, what are the guidelines for that?
Oh, to me?
You seem like the one that knows more about the money aspect of it.
So actually, I don't know about the money aspect of it. The first I heard of this was on Saturday, like everyone else. It is incumbent upon the school board to come up with an $800,000 budget. That is what, that is what they're tasked with doing at this point in time. Let's just say, as they move along, there's no way they can make this happen. They have to put together a budget and hand it to me in 18 days. I have to submit it to the state of New Hampshire, say it plain and simple.
Does that budget take into consideration the contract held in Newport for the $17,000 per student?
That is something that the school board is going to have to work through. So at this point in time, the budget that you saw on Saturday that was printed in your town reports is a legally binding budget of the school, minus, drop down to $800,000. is the legally binding budget of the school minus, drop down to $800,000. They have to reapportion all of that money in the categories that are listed on that budget. They can't come up with new categories. They need to take the categories that currently exist and they need to reduce them. If they're not able to make an $800,000 budget, they're going to have to go to court.
Does everyone else know that we have three different Croydon community pages on Facebook? Did anyone else know that besides me? Everyone knew that? Why do we have three of them? That's ridiculous. I mean, Jody was talking about how to get the information out to everybody. There is information on two of them that weren't on the main one. I'm on the main one. I posted in all three. Everything I posted went into all. Okay, maybe everything you posted, but not necessarily important info.
What's the main one?
Our town website says stuff from last year.
Yeah, I have no control over it. I've seen the town website, but I don't know if--
I don't know. I just think that's sad that we have three community pages because that doesn't sound like a community at all. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be. But I did see posts though in the group that I'm in about how, "Well, if you all don't like it, you should have been to the meeting on Saturday." And I agree in hindsight, we all should have been. But I think that I speak for all of us when we say that we thought that our select board had the best interests of the town and the people in it at heart. So I trusted that, you know, my opinion's not going to matter on something, you know, like, I don't know, road people or whatever you guys talk about. I don't know anything about that stuff. I'm trusting you guys because you guys are the ones-- the selectmen, because they're the ones that got elected. Maybe I shouldn't have. But we're a small community that is more divided than a lot of bigger communities I've seen. And that seems to be a problem. And the school is supposed to be the heart of the community. So I don't understand why everyone seems like they're so against it and why we're taking from this small representation of people to make these decisions about the heart of our community. Then nobody that's making these decisions seems to view it that way. But everyone that's involved in that school community views it as the heart, the hub and center. And the reason that our kids are doing well and are learning things. And I don't know about test scores. I just know from my personal experience, my kids have benefited from that school. They would not have benefited from going to a different school. And I think a lot of people can say that because of the people there. So God forbid one of your budget cuts is another teacher because the teachers that you have are amazing and they're not giving enough credit.
I just have a few quick things and a question. One is going to this question for, I guess, the group and the school board. I don't know how this works, but given this decision was made with a small number of people and everyone agrees more people should have been there. You know, you're presenting the school board plan as, "We just got to deal with it now." You know, you're breaking away with what we've done before. But with the town meeting, it's, "This is just how we do it." So what are we going to do to change it and say, "This can't happen again without an actual election"? And who's going to look at the laws? Well, I'm saying it's something to research. Secondly, I think the town-- you know, a lot of people have questions about the credibility of the board sitting up there and their influence in this decision. And, you know, I had an open mind and I walk in and the first thing you hand out is Ian Underwood's blog post. Yes, this was handed out and distributed by the school board at an official school board meeting. And now we're saying, "Oh, you were blindsided and I didn't know anything about this"? You handed it out at the beginning of the meeting.
Can I respond tonight?
Yes.
So the reason I did is because I figured, and I know for sure that most of the people here weren't there on Saturday and that they might want to see what everybody else saw on Saturday. That was the reason for my providing it today. I also handed it on NIPQ because I've been scouring the Facebook groups all day, yesterday and today, pulling together responses to many of the questions and-- I mean, I almost forgot one of these. We tried to pick as many as we could because there were a lot of misconceptions out there and I wanted to make sure that those were clarified. Those were my two reasons.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think you may want to consider what you hand out at official meetings.
I just explained to them why I did it, though. Why do you think about that?
That's what I'm just saying. If we're talking about credibility and something you have to think about representing the school board and representing the town, then you may want to think a little harder next time with that stuff. And then, you know, you see that and then the other school board elect you as the chair, you know? And so where's the credibility with there? With, you know, we know who wrote the document and we know who came up with this idea. And then we turn around and say, "Okay, yeah, you should be the chair again. No discussion, no debate." And that's your business. And I agree, this is all legal. But it's, you know, the perception and the credibility. That's all I'll say. And then lastly, my question is, if this results in a suit against the school board or the school or the district, whatever it is, who foots the bill for the defense?
You.
Okay, thank you.
All the taxpayers.
Yeah.
All the taxpayers, including the ones that disagree with us.
Right about what was just stated about our school board, did you support what the school presented for a budget, the 1.7?
We voted for it.
Correct. So you supported it at one point. And the three of you sat there like sitting ducks, not even defending our school board's budget? And had no suggestions, nothing? You just--
So you're siding-- Tom did. Tom did.
Yeah, but he's not a school board member.
Yeah, he was. No, no, Tom was a schooler member on Saturday.
And he defended it--
He sat up here. He sat up here and defended it, he did.
Okay, but the other two did not defend it?
I don't think Eric said much at all. I supported, I mean, I think it's an interesting idea. I support it and Tom was against it. And those were the two voices on the board. And that's normal for a board, right?
Okay, okay, sure. So for the rest of our community, if we want to see some change, just like some other people have said, we need to make a lot of change for our school board, for our selectmen. We're all here tonight wasting hours of our time. Great. We need to waste hours of our time on a weekly basis to get this to change. There are plenty of legal options. I brought some friends that have plenty of ideas. We need legal representation. We can make a change to this board. We do not need to wait for the next election. We can make changes to our select board. We don't need to wait for another election. It's because we need to unite now to make those changes. So if we want to do that, let's make action to do so. And that's our next step. We can sit here, go round and round on it, and it's not going to change anything for the numbers right now. We need to change it immediately, coming forward, with everybody making our voices heard. This is not acceptable. So let's continue this and get it going.
I just wanted one more quick comment. I hear everybody standing where legal dicks and legal faddies. I've tap danced on both sides of the law for the good part of my life, and I'll admit it. But I think too much is being said about what's legal and not what's morally sound. Because if your moral compass is letting everybody do this, I don't care what's legal.
Question possibly for you, I'm not sure. Based on what was just said, if we have a legal right to re-vote on-- if we have legal options there. If something happened, if there was a change in the select board or the school board, does that change anything about the budget the way it is now? Nothing changes still?
The budget for the Croydon Village School for the fiscal year 2023 right now is $800,000. Anything beyond that is subject. I couldn't answer that question.
Do any of you on the board have kids that went through Croydon Village School? None of you have kids that have ever been through Croydon Village School?
No skin in the game.
So--
I moved here a year and a half ago. I have one son here who is graduating from homeschooling this year. My younger daughter, who is 15, has been homeschooled up until this point and has recently opted to be done with homeschooling. And she started at Sunapee a few weeks ago.
Okay.
So yes, I've got skin in the game. Yes, I'm very interested in keeping her at Sunapee because she is very happy there.
Okay.
I don't know how this year is going to pan out now. I walked into this two days ago thinking, "I want to contribute to the school board" and now I've got this project on my hands. It's going to be interesting, to say the least.
I don't know. It just seems strange to me that the couple of people that were on the school board that did have kids in the school are not on the school board anymore. And I don't know the ins and outs of it. I just know what it was like being at one of those meetings before. So I can only imagine that it became too stressful with all of the other daily parenting stresses. So if you really do have substantial skin in the game because you're invested in your kids, your daughter specifically with her school choice, I warn you, look at the track record for how many years parents have been on that board and why are those parents who still have kids in the school system, why they choose not to maybe do that again? Why have they been trying to get-- I know that there are parents that have been on the school board that have not necessarily been happy about being on the school board. So I would just, fair warning about what you might be getting into.
We'll see. I've got three years to--
Hello, I'm ready. I'm new to the community, so bear with me. I don't like to speak, so bear with me. I just wanted to say, my family's new here to this town. We're kind of learning what we built. And basically, we chose this town because of the small settings, the low taxes and the small net community, you know, and the school. And then after that, I liked that there was a school choice. I personally graduated from Sunapee and that's where I would like to send my children. So with your decision-making, please, moving forward, keep that in mind. You know, that would be detrimental to our family, why we moved here.
And my other question is, is there a treasurer or somebody that oversees the money? Is, I guess, is that a title for--
Beth. She's our business administrator.
So that's basically a treasurer?
Treasurer.
There's a treasurer. The person standing behind you is the treasurer.
Okay. So just moving forward, I guess, maybe I approach to you, is to look for grants. Like if obviously we're going to be stuck with this $800,000 budget, you know, you know, there's going to be something somewhere because the whole reason we came here is those three points that I need. So, you know, with my three and four-year-old, you know, I want to see this community stay the way it is and not be blown up and, you know, high tax. So that's just one of my five cents. Thank you.
So I just have a statement for everybody here and I wish that not that more people had stayed. But so a few years ago, we, our budget got reduced and we didn't really have a plan for it, only that the year before the budget had reduced and we thought we could probably do that again. What ended up happening was we had deficit because we couldn't pay all of our bills. And so the following year, we had to come up with that money, the deficit, and the money to actually meet the needs of the school. So our taxes had gone down, but then they jumped. And we're talking-- I don't know the number, maybe $100,000, maybe $200,000. Right now, and I hope you can do it, honestly. If our tax rate can go down to 67 cents a thousand, how fabulous. But good luck, okay? So we're going to go from $8.15 a thousand down to 67. So your tax bill is going to be fantastic, right? And we'll celebrate that next year.
I won't.
But save your money. Because when, if and when we have to go to the court to petition them for more money, we come up with that the following year. Plus, the money to actually meet the needs of what we need to do for these kids. So your taxes are going to skyrocket. So a plan for you is, please just save your money. That's my statement. And good luck, please. From us all around.
So like I said, two points. One is Jody didn't actually know until a couple of days that anything was going to happen. I mean, if you read last year's minutes, I think she pointed this out. I said this a year ago, I was going to do this, but I wasn't sure I was going to do it. But my main point is, I really want to address the question of conflict of interest because I can't think of a greater conflict of interest than to have a parent of a school-aged kid sitting on a board that votes how much money to spend on that kid. This may be the only board in New Hampshire that doesn't have a conflict of interest, except for Kevin. But two out of three, Beth.
Everybody who wants to comment, go to the mic.
I need you to have the mic. My voice can be heard great, very loud.
Deceiving, very deceiving, all of us.
I think the people on Zoom would love to hear what you have to say.
I'm all done saying anything at this point. Heard enough. So we have nine, two people on Zoom as well. They probably have to be cut out.
It's still a conflict of interest, even if you didn't vote on it. There's no way anyone's going to trust you that you didn't know about it. So it's still a conflict of interest that should be with all of us.
First, we had email.
Yes.
For the restless company here, what you have to say, just speak in and speak loud. There's no voting or anything going on the restless meeting, right? You know, we, I guess, like, see you on the other side. Nothing's going to like pop up randomly once everybody leaves? No. All right, like I said earlier, we were going to make this a working meeting where we would do public comments and then we would work-- and then we would do a few more public comments. But there were so many comments that it was like, let's just let the comments happen. And we'll do another working meeting very soon.
So FYI, we need to do this in a working meeting. It's been stated already. And if we, I mean, I'm really happy that you all got to share what you were thinking and give us your ideas and things to consider in all of this, that it's all-- excuse me. It's all very important. But in our next meeting, we actually have to do brainstorming and figure out how to do this. And I hope you can help us with it. Because we don't, we won't have time to listen to everybody again. I mean, we just won't.
And when will that be? The next week?
April.
We haven't set it up yet, but we need to do that before we end this meeting tonight, which we're not done with yet because we still have some work to do.
Well, would it be more important to--
I can only hear one person talking. I can't hear--
Would it be more important to do a budget meeting before the 19th since this report is due in 18 days?
Yes, we're not waiting until April 19th for another meeting.
Wait, well, the next meeting, that way people can be here.
We have a month to schedule. I think it's on the agenda to pick a date.
Okay.
So we will set that probably tonight. We just have to compare all of our calendars to make sure that we can all be here.
Could you do it while people are still here?
We certainly can. We've been talking with you guys, so if you would like us to stop engaging with you now, we can do that. And we can set the next meeting time. Is that what everyone would prefer to have happen then?
Well, we have one person.
I just want to say one. So earlier you said that you are not required, being on the board, to do any type of research for education or what is good for children. But you three are the deciding factor of what is free and adequate education for our children? Because you guys get to decide, right? No, no, there was. Do we get to have a vote on what you decide? So if you say, "We're doing those learning pods, that's what we're doing for learning and we don't care if you like it or not," or do we get a vote?
It's a big question.
Because you're not doing-- I just, no, I know, I do. I just want to, yes, I do, thank you. I just wasn't finished speaking. So my question is, is that based upon the fact that you stated that you, none of you have to do any research to decide what the best education is? You said that. Someone asked you and you said, "We are not required to do that." I would like to respond to you. What I said was, "We are not legally required to do research to run the school." That's what we were asked.
Right.
And so--
That's why I'm asking.
So in terms of this, we've already started doing research on what the possibilities are. We have to, because, I mean, we're elected officials. We're not professionals in running school boards or school districts. That's why we need the help of the town. We would love to have your input on this stuff. Right, but you guys get to decide the fate of everybody in town's children? So that is how it works. We will have a hearing. We want, I mean, we're going to have working meetings because we have to. We will have a hearing, we'll present it to everybody, and that's the way it normally works, right Beth?
Correct.
And then we do get to vote on it. We want to take your input on it, but--
But you are making your decision.
Excuse me?
I have a decision.
You are making your decision.
But if Emily takes two against one--
I don't even know what the options are yet. How can I make a decision?
Your options are what your husband and your family decided. And that's what your vote is going to be. And that is very unfair to the town. So that's why I'm asking if we get a vote in it, if we don't. So I just was trying to clarify that. So basically, you three decide the fate of all of the children in town and parents will have to take what you give them, whether they would like it or not. And that might happen, that might happen, what you decide. Jody, it might happen.
And you might decide the fate of those children until you are off of that seat, but I can guarantee you that you won't be there for long.
Good. Excuse me, I just have one quick question. Is it possible that, when it comes time to, you know, whatever the list of options that you come up with, is it possible to have two days to, like, have the town people vote, instead of, like, the one? Because sometimes it's hard to come, you know, even if it's like, two hours, you know...
This is gonna be a hearing, and we're gonna have multiple meetings. There's gonna be an ongoing conversation about this, is what I would say. I mean, we have to come up with...
Well, I mean, for the final decision. So if it is for the final decision, could we make it so that there was like, two dates, to say, "Okay, put your votes in for what you think would be best," or, you know, whoever, you know, for the town to pick new dates? You know, because it's kinda hard sometimes for work, or... I, I don't, no, we can commit to that.
To, to just try to give it a little clearer picture. And again, I am still learning.
It's, I'm learning too.
This process is gonna be happening over the next few weeks. We are gonna have to hold more than one meeting to try to figure this out. It's, this is not gonna be easy. We're gonna be working independently, at home, doing research, around our jobs as well, as we all...
We all have full-time jobs.
So each meeting that we have, we have to post to the public. So, we post here at the town hall, and at the store, and at the school. And, I guess, there's gonna have it, posting it on Facebook as well.
I don't, I accept the same, don't do it always.
We don't do it anymore, but...
Well, I mean...
I don't see why not to post it on those three Facebook groups that most people seem to know about as well. We would love, I can't say, I can't speak for anybody. I would love to have as many opinions and ideas from the public.
Well, I mean, we did, it's an ideas section. I mean, when it comes to the, like, decision day, like, the day, the final day, that we have to say, "We're doing X."
Right.
You know, if there could be like, two days, or...
Two different, sure, I guess half the town can make it one night and half the night, that's my time.
It's like, like the little block.
We can try to do that.
It's like saying we really tried to do that. There was no way I could get it. Right, so, that's all I'm asking. So, obviously, greatest reward is need, but I mean, for the final, like...
We will try to do that.
You know, if possible, to give like, leeway for people that are shift, or whatever, you know, just to make everybody able to get here. That's, that's all I was asking, and that would be possible. We'll try to make that happen. That would be great. Thank you.
My understanding of what she was asking about is that she wanted the annual election class to be voted on day. And that's, I don't know what that is. I know, that's, I just wanna say, that's... But the, the time in which the decisions are made is on the election day, when you let them to make the decision. Okay, I'm just, all right, okay.
I answered the question correctly.
Okay, cool, thanks. So yes, but, but people frequently think that they need to come and vote on things. The voting's been done. You've been designated to make those decisions on behalf of people, and you make, will make the decisions that you think are the best interest in the town, because the people of town elected you to do that. So, that's all.
Right, but that's not what I'm asking, okay?
So, what are your, your thoughts and ideas on this budget?
I think it's from you.
Okay.
Since you passed that, I wrote them down.
Are you asking him what his ideas are, or how to spend the money? Or are you, I mean, generally, his opinion of how it came about?
Well, okay, so are you...
Can you talk to the microphone?
Are you asking, I mean, I wrote a pamphlet that explained my ideas about this. So, did you read it?
I didn't.
Okay, we have one up there, you can read it, and it lays out everything I'm thinking about. That lays out why... Okay, you can actually...
I stole one from the chair.
Anybody have one? So you can read that, and that lays out my thinking behind the proposal. As far as the solutions, I have some ideas, they have some ideas, everybody has some ideas. But those, it remains to be seen which of those will be doable, how other institutions will react to proposals that are...
I don't see how you think this is at all feasible.
It's feasible because the state says it's feasible, it's feasible because it's being done by other places.
It is.
There are states that spend $7,000 per student, and they get the same test scores as New Hampshire.
So, if, if you want this, and it doesn't work...
If it doesn't...
Are you gonna be liable for that, for money that...
I, it's not me, the town voted for it. People keep saying, "I did this," I, I said...
You, you're, you're the mastermind.
I said...
The repairman.
I said, "To the town, there's two ways you can do this. One, you let that, the district, come to you and make a demand, or you decide on a number, and you tell them what they're gonna spend." Those are two different ways of thinking about it. I asked people if they would like to take that second approach, and it turns out that the majority of the people at the meeting wanted to take that.
There were a lot of people back there working?
It's a typical, it was a typical meeting size.
Does anyone else in that meeting know about this ahead of time, though?
Yes.
My friends did.
Your friends did.
All the people that you recruited, all 24?
No, a lot of the people, I don't really know that. I don't know a lot of people.
So no one, okay. So none of the rest of us even knew that this was a fear, which is why we're like, "Oh, right, I'll start selecting, whatever." Meanwhile, you're in the background, you have these people that you're like, "This is my idea, come to the meeting and vote on it."
Many of us, I was like, oh, many, many of the people...
It was one of them, as originally, the same motion.
Many of the people voted for it. I had no communication with other than to give them a pamphlet, which it read...
Can we not have an argument here? I want one person to speak at a time, honestly.
Why is not the only thing about arguing? I think it's sort of arguing. If we were, if we knew, if you knew you were gonna present this, and you presented it to a certain amount of people, why didn't you post it in the community, saying, "Come, vote on this, this is my idea, I'm sharing it with everyone?"
You represent the townspeople, correct?
No.
You don't represent the townspeople.
At the district meeting, I represent me. At the town meeting, I represent the town. Those are two, they are not, they're two different... They are, they are two different entities. And when I'm at a district meeting, I have no power.
You're talking to townspeople or your...
I absolutely care about it.
All you care about is your taxes, because you don't have...
That is so necessary.
If you will read, then you will see.
Ian, Ian, you know what? It's not worth it.
Yeah, it's not. What I care about is the kids and the tax bill.
All right, Jody, just like you're talking now. Jody, if that was their conflict of interest, you wouldn't decide, and your husband said, "Don't worry, he's not worth it." You're the school board representative, his family. And you decided with your husband over him, saying, "Don't let him have my..."
What I said, but, I mean, I did say that, but I didn't want, it just, you're, you're just talking to each other.
He and Ian, he's not worth it.
And now you're talking over me. This is what I don't wanna happen, that's why I asked him to stop in the way I did. I, I think this is just the main...
You're not worth being up there.
Excuse me, that's fine, run against me, I'm good. And, I mean, who even knows about running against? Mine turns up next year, eh, run against me.
I don't want it, but you're fired from college, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
You don't look out for, you're looking out for you, is what you're doing.
But I, you know what, that's an argument, that's, you know...
No, it's not, it's, it's proven fact, right here. And 90% of the people that were in this room tonight wouldn't agree with this.
Great. I'm glad you don't feel that.
See, that's the attitude, right there. It's ha, it, it's awful.
I'm sorry you made me.
You're a disgrace for that school board.
I'm sorry you made me.
Isn't legal...
I'm trying to help you.
Isn't legal to show up to people that are going to vote in and not present a cost? You know, is that legal?
Right.
I know.
Okay.
Your argumentation.
Madam Chair.
You guys are smart, you know, isn't legal...
Although I am not from...
Can we just have one person talking in the room at a time, please?
But isn't legal...
Please. Please. Thank you, skip, please.
Madam Chair, even though I am not from this town, I'm from a much larger town in Guilford. I have been on my budget committee for almost 10 years. And I have crafted, because we are an SB2 town, which means we don't have the traditional town meeting. We have a deliberative session, and then the ballot. I highly suggest that you folks, and those that left, at least consider doing that. Because a lot of what I hear tonight, and, by the way, full disclosure, I own the underwoods for a number of years. He makes mine hit her when I read his stuff, because it's always coming at things from different directions. But after listening to everybody here, I am glad to see that the school board actually was listening to you. I come from Guilford. I'm in the process of suing my school board, because they won't answer at all. They sit there like Easter Island stone-faced moa statues. And that's a problem all over the state. As much as you may not like the three of them right now, you should at least be pleasantly surprised that you've got it better than I do, and probably 95% of the other districts out there. I understand what it's like. In an SB2 town, they would bring the budget to me. I would have to go through thousands of lines at the general ledger account level to decide, "Is this good, or is this bad?" Same thing with the town. Then we, the budget committee, would present that to all of you. At the deliberative session, you get the chance to examine it, you get the chance to ask questions, you get to get happy, you get to get angry. But then, 30 days down the line, you then get to do a ballot vote. I think folks here in Creighton ought to think about doing that, because all of the problems that I've heard so far tonight would be solved if you didn't like what happened at the town meeting, which we then call a deliberative meeting. You could vote, secret ballot, in the voting booth, and say, "I don't like this, and I'm not gonna let it pass." It may have gone through the deliberative session, but you then have a yes or no, and you get to vote all day long. You also get the chance to vote by absentee ballot. So there's no excuse not to vote. I, I am also going to suggest, and again, I'll say the same thing for all these empty chairs, and the gentleman that was coming up, looking for the can't-do folks to try to change their minds. You guys are on the gun. You have no choice left. I would highly suggest that you start working with the school board, put the animus aside, because otherwise, if, if you can't do that, if you can't help them prove that the budget is unworkable, they can't go to Superior Court. Now, if your school had a furnace breakdown, if a hole in the roof came upon you, same thing with the town. The fire engine stopped working, this went wrong, that went wrong, that, that escaped hatch is to go to Superior Court and say, "We have a problem that we didn't budget for. This is an act of God. The judge will take the case on an expedient basis." If you folks can help them go through each line by line by line, and try in a friendly manner, or at least respectful manner, you might find out that no way can you make this budget work. Then you can go and ask them, "Hey, here's a petition, we want you to go to Superior Court." These folks are, I hate to say it, not well-treated tonight. But they are the folks that can help save the school if you work with them and prove that the $800,000 budget can't work. I'm not saying that it can, I'm not saying that it can't. But they got 19 days, and they cannot work on this outside of this room. It has to be a public meeting all the time. People got to show up and get involved. Our founding fathers' vision was for an interested and involved citizenry that would vote their own interests. You all folks have your vested interests, your kids. I know what it's like. I raised two boys, now I have to raise my grandson, and I've got issues with my school board. You folks have issues here.
Yeah.
Mine's a lot, I gotta go, so mine's a lot worse than yours. Work, work, work with them. Get some ideas, and either make it work, or, from what I've heard tonight, you don't want it to work, at least try that process. Because otherwise, you're stuck, because you won't be able to go to Superior Court. That's what you need to keep in mind, Superior Court or bust. Thank you for letting me say a few words. Say thank you for the time.
Um, I agree with the delay voting, I think that's a great idea. I hope that we do work together to make sure the school stays open. But I do want to know, are you planning to have your charter school open at the beginning of July, when this budget goes into effect?
Um, we don't even know that the answer is a charter school.
We don't know if we're the same...
Are you planning to open the charter school that you've been planning, in Facebook world?
Are you talking about the one that Jody's been...
Yes, yes, Jody and Ian.
The plan is not to open it this September, no. I haven't had time to work on it, barely made a dent in it.
Right, because I'm sure that's a long process.
Right.
Okay.
But that's not also a conflict of interest?
No.
No? Jody's both trying to work on a charter school.
Can you explain how that is a charter, a conflict of interest?
Okay, it would be in your pocket. You're working on opening a charter school.
Go on.
But you're on a school board for an already existing school, so how's that not conflict of interest?
So, maybe competing schools? Would they be competing? No, because, so, you want to hear my charter school proposal?
I don't think she was personally trying to open one. I think she was working on the idea of a town board.
It, it's, yeah, it's, I'm doing it as a resident, and I am on the school board. I, my idea was, so, about half our kids go to Montessori for fifth through eighth grade, and then they, most of them, vast majority, go to Newport. That's a whole different kind of education. If Montessori really suited them, then they don't really have good choices that suit them when they get out of Montessori. So I wanted to open a charter school for high school-level kids, not competing with Arcata Four School.
Only high school?
Yes. That would allow them another choice. That was the idea.
I was confused on that from the various things on Facebook, so thank you for that.
I don't know what's going on.
You sent out a survey about wanting a charter school in town.
Oh, I asked about it, yes.
That's right, I did, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
I don't wanna do this. I, I was at town meeting, and I voted against the $800,000 budget. I, I've been paying taxes for 22 years here, and I've never had a kid. So, I've paid a lot of money. That's fine, that's my, that, that's the deal, that's what we're supposed to do, right? I was horrified that your friends and neighbors are the ones that voted this in. It wasn't them, they had nothing to do with it. And I was shocked, because it was people I knew, people I worked with, and... I, I was ready to go for the big number and try to pare that down, not the little number, and try to work with it, because it didn't seem doable to me. But your people voted it in, and I was shell-shocked, and... Don't be mad at them. Talk to, talk to your friends and neighbors that wanted this. Now we got to fix it, right? Well, you guys, if you have kids, like to help try to be part of it, but can't stay some.
Sure. Those friends and neighbors, they had already known about it the night before because, because there was somebody that called everybody at nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night and said, "Hey, listen, I just got this breaking news that Ian is going to propose this." And these people already knew it, so that's why they came. Us that didn't know about it, I'm just stating the facts. That didn't come, we knew nothing about it. But apparently, the night before, one of them had slipped to somebody and that one person was trying to, you know, call their friends saying, "Hey, did you know this might happen?" So they already did know about it. As little as they want to pretend and play the innocent victim, they already knew about it.
But I don't think these are the people that you're thinking of that voted in. Do you know the twenty people that voted yes? Or the twenty-six? I'm one of the ten that voted no.
Well, I'm telling you someone who sat right up front, not... Well, Ian just said he showed it to his friends, he didn't compete.
I could probably name a dozen of them. Not one of them. But the point that I also noted at the meeting on Saturday is when Jody and Aaron purportedly abstained from the vote, here's the table, and their voting cards were like this to vote for the eight-hundred-thousand dollars. And when it was then asked if they wanted to vote no, their voting cards were flat on the table. So they can say they abstained, and I'm not sure. Maybe they weren't counted. Kathy Pesky was one of the counters, and so was Jeanne Dearden. And I'm pretty sure they both voted no. No against the one-point-seven, yes for the eight-hundred thousand. So I don't think they're trustworthy at all. I don't trust that they can, in good faith, come up with any sort of plan for eight-hundred thousand dollars.
Except that they're wrong.
Except that they're wrong. Yeah, but you guys have got to help them do it. But it's your kids.
Well, we can't, we can offer suggestions that they're already voted in. We can't do anything about it. They make the final decision. They can, they can say our opinions matter, but if they don't actually matter, then they can vote however they want.
I can tell you that my kids go to Sonopie School, and they're going to continue going to Sonopie School, and the town of Creighton is going to pay for it, period. They didn't budget for it? Oh, well. Like Angie said, we're going to go into a deficit, and they'll have to clean up the trash.
And like Skip was just saying, our, didn't you say ninety-five percent? Our school was better off than ninety-five percent of the ones out here in New Hampshire?
As far as school board members listen, my school board would never have done what these folks did tonight.
But you said our school system was ninety-five percent better.
No, no, I said the school, I said the school boards that they were willing to listen. My school board...
I can listen to anything, but it doesn't mean they follow it.
They don't even get the chance to have a public comment. There's a law going through the legislature right now that will force school boards to have a public comment system. I put legislation in so that they would be forced to answer the questions. As I said, they didn't answer my questions. I have to sue to take them to court to get two simple answers.
But why would you change something that's working so good that they, they meaning Jody, I'm saying they, that Jody put into effect school choice four years ago? We were told nothing would change. We had school choice, we had busing.
Yeah. Anyway, I do want to jump in here, I'm sorry, I'm used to cut off, but I really have heard all of these arguments. Skip, I'm sorry, what, your comments got misunderstood. But that's a whole nother thing. His point is that school boards don't have open meetings like this around the state. We're like the only town that does it. There might be two others.
I don't know what else.
Well, but we do know.
And here, I just want to make a comment.
Okay, so...
Jim Pesky mentioned our taxes have been wonderful since school choice. When I moved here in nineteen eighty, my taxes were two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars a year. I still have the receipt. I pay now over five-thousand dollars a year, and it has been going up every year. So don't, he went and said that, oh, because of his school choice that he put in, our taxes went down? That's so false, and that's what gets us so upset because he follows your lead, not your lead, but the whoever.
Jim does not follow our lead, trust me on that.
But you can consider it.
Jim is on his own, whatever. I can't remember the truth. But no, I mean, you're right.
What can you say to us right here that are left to make us trust you that you're going to make sure that our kids and grand... I have no kids in school. I have four grandchildren in Creighton, two different families. They choose to be in Creighton. One of my sons chose to buy a house in Creighton just because of the school system. The only reason, not because of us. We live on opposite ends of towns, on town.
Because it was school system or it was a school choice?
It was before school choice, but he was ready to make that decision. When school choice came into effect, his daughter goes to Montessori. But I just don't understand why or how... Now I'm losing my train of thought. Yeah, I can't, what were we talking about?
How are we going to keep our legacy?
Yeah, I mean, are you honestly doing this for the best interest? I know, okay, I'm going to pretend. I'm just going to say you knew nothing about what your husband was going to propose. All the front row knew nothing about what you were going to propose. But you all know they wanted their taxes down. Heck, I want my taxes down. I own three properties, one in Creighton. This is the biggest burden, my home in Creighton. The other two, piece of cake, two different towns. This one, I've never had a problem. I've never gone, I'd be willing to say it, never gone to a town meeting up until six years ago because it ran smooth. It ran really good. I didn't have to worry about anything undermining or anything underhanded. Now, I think everything's starting to run smooth, okay? You know, we got school choice covered, and then something like this comes up. Can there be cream taken off the top? Absolutely, but not half the money. Let's be logical, and let's, I know you've already heard this.
I have no idea. Nobody has any idea because we haven't even needed a inch toward it yet. But what I do know is there are successful methods that do cost less, that educate kids in different ways, not one size fits all. I do know that. I've been so professionally, I actually have a PhD in education. I've done research on...
I don't know all that.
Okay, good. I just, I mean, I want you to know that. I mean, not maybe everybody else doesn't, right? And, you know, we're going to research how well these other programs do, and can we bring them here, and will it work? And can we give options? Can we keep school choice going? Can we negotiate? I mean, these are the questions I'm starting with, and that's where I am.
I'd like to work with you, but I don't want to hear you say that we will not disrupt our kids or grandchildren or that are already in place where they are.
I, I...
Are you going to move them and take them out of their placement they're already in that they're thriving? I have a freshman grandson.
Sure.
That already has a recruiter talking to him about college, asking him which college he wants to go to, not because of his smart, it's because of his athletic, I mean, he's wonderful. He's doing wonderful. I have another granddaughter that's in high school that gets high honor. She's got a four-point-oh right now. I don't want to have to see her move. I mean, it's not my choice, it's my children's choice. My other granddaughter, she struggled with reading. I was up to her house every night, even when she went to Mont... No, every night, sorry, every Monday night when she went to Montessori to make sure I helped her. And yes, we do need to make sure that we help our kids and grandkids. I get that part too. But I don't want to have to see these kids be taken out of Sonopie, be taken out of Montessori because your plan is going to...
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I mean, that's not a plan. I think moving kids in the middle of the year is one of the worst things you can do.
I don't mean in the middle.
Sorry, in the middle of a program, it's the worst thing you can do. I absolutely agree with that. And you know what? The Commissioner of Education a number of years ago, when we were fighting for school choice here, she told us to take the kids out of Montessori in the middle of the school year. She didn't even think about the kids. So just think about that. We do care about the kids. We understand these things, we do, and we're going to try our best.
Why, that's... Why are you going to try your best? You tell me right now, me and I can say, "I will try to not have this daughter taken out of Sonopie."
I will try to not have his daughter get taken out of Sonopie.
I'm going to try like hell to keep my daughter in Sonopie.
And you shouldn't let...
I'm going to try like hell to keep my daughter in Sonopie. She's loving going to school for the first time in years.
You didn't, you just walked in.
And what Amanda said, I'm behind her on that. If I were a parent with a kid in Sonopie, I wouldn't want them being taken out at all. That kid's staying there no matter what. I'm with you on that, Amanda.
I am.
So I'm worried about our current school too, like...
Thank you, Jody. Welcome.
I have a second grader on the autism spectrum who is doing well at the school with these specific teachers. Like, I am worried about the school choice with the kids out of the school too. But this specific school, there's a reason why this school has been working for these kids. And it's because of the teachers and the environment, and the teachers know what they need. I don't have anything else to say, I'm just rambling.
Thank you.
But Kevin spent patiently waiting up at that mic this whole time.
Okay, I'm ready.
You call, right?
It's all right, I don't even care. Is this really, I don't even care. For those that are last, thanks for putting up with all the bots, bullshit, and agitation this evening. I'm sure it's been trying for everybody, including the school board. So as much as I disagree with the way things happen and the way it appears to potentially be going, I thank you for your time. I mean that. I've got a couple of quick questions, and then I promise I'll just get the hell out of here. Because honestly, I've got to go to work again, which is part of the reason why I missed Saturday. And as, I agree with you too, sir. I agree with a lot of what your sentiment was. You have, you have sound, you've got sound justification for what you said, from my standpoint. That said, I don't believe that your problem is any worse than ours because these are our children, and those are your children, and we are all going to fight pretty much to the death to get the best education that we can for our children. So I don't see, I don't need a pissing contest as far as whose works. That's it. Thank you. As far as your sentiment towards suing the school, I think that there's a sour taste in a lot of folks' mouths going towards Creighton School. I don't know if it's intentionally, I don't know if it's been bunker bombed to an extent. I'm not going to say that. But it doesn't look good. It's just not a good look the way things have progressed and the track that it's gone down.
Are you talking about the school or the school board?
I'm talking about the actions as of recent, as far as the budgetary meeting, the way it was, the way it was necessarily, I guess the way it was proposed and timing. I can't do anything about that, I'm not here to fight about it. What's done is done. Let's move forward. I, as many others in this town, rely on public transportation to and from school. It's been an ongoing thing. I know you guys are looking at faces, hearing about me. You know my last name, you've seen me, you've heard my voice.
Just learn your person.
Me too.
Well, you know what? I'm in.
Kathy, right?
So, all right. I would rather find her on radar. Ah, you want to Kevin or more? The bus situation itself poses a logistical nightmare. Yes, ma'am.
No, it's fixed.
Is it every day?
Yeah, it started yesterday, today, today, starting today.
Okay, but thankfully, yes, things have changed. And I'm not trying to kick a dead horse that's already been nursed back. If Arnold, actually, it's not Arnold anymore.
New bus driver.
Thank you. So timing-wise, is it required to have a child to school before the start of school? From the parent or on the transportation? Transportation, no. Maybe it's hitting a dead horse. I just have to ask because I have, I don't... Don't, to Newport School District, Richards Elementary, what's the start time for Richards Elementary?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen. So it's not feasible for my son to be picked up at my house at eight fifteen then, is it?
Doesn't seem like it.
I wouldn't think so either. But that was the only proposed outcome. I'm not laying it on anybody's doorstep, I'm just voicing a concern that I've got, and I voiced it, I voiced it repeatedly. I don't know how we can have a school start at eight fifteen and then have my child picked up in Creighton with a ten-minute drive.
That seems hard.
He's driving his truck every day.
Can you contact Nicole, the principal, at the school?
Ma'am, I've contacted, I wrote Frank Perrodi an email regarding it. He basically told me that he would reimburse me tax...
That was until we had a bus driver, I mean, now, right?
So last three days ago, I have it.
Okay, because, just for the schedule. I mean, before, that was just a mess, and everybody got reimbursed for taking taxis or whatever.
I haven't, I don't, I didn't see, that was another thing. I don't know what everybody's rate is. I don't care what tax rate is. I'm not sending the school. I'm not going through all the hoops to get whatever tax rate they're going to give me back because there's times when I worked in Massachusetts, man, I'm a professional painter, and I have to come back to school for two-fifty in Newport to pick my son up because there was no transportation in the afternoon to get my son home from Richards School.
Yeah, yeah.
Here.
It was awful.
So if I'm working to sustain my living, how can I be expected to leave work daily, three hours early?
I get it. Anyway, but we have bus drivers now, and I'm really sorry for that. And it wasn't just us that had the bus driver problem, you know that, right?
No, I, I...
This is already a bus issue.
I know, but it's felt horrible in a town and community that's small. And it is in Newport, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Philadelphia, LA. There's, there's reserved buses, and there is public transportation in those towns.
Yeah, I took small towns.
Where they demand that you finish, please.
Anyway, yeah. Thank you. I'm really...
Thirty-four seconds.
Three...
Thirty-four seconds, that's all I'm asking.
Thirty?
Thirty seconds. Three and zero. There's public transportation in those towns. If this is going to become an issue in Creighton every year repeatedly, which it hasn't yet, but with a budget that doesn't allot for who knows what, it could become a concern. And I'm just voicing it, and we've already dealt with it as a community once. I don't want to have to deal with it again because I've lost, I don't want to say what I've lost. I've lost thousands of dollars in three months, thousands. And leaving work early, three hours a day, me and my wife work together, man. So that's six hours a day, lost wages. Can you support a family on two-thirds of your budget? No, you can't. And that's why I missed that meeting Saturday because I was busting my ass to make up the money I lost three months straight.
All right. I just want to...
RSA twenty-nine dash six.
What's that?
That's, that is the requirement to bus students K through eight to and from the school if they reside more than two miles from the school that they're assigned to.
Yeah, I think I actually read that.
So I bet you did. Thank you, folks, for your time seeing this. I have to go to work again. Thanks for your time. Have a good night, folks. Yeah.
No, it, you know, Kathy, no. I just, I just wanted to make a... I thought you said go. Ladies and gentlemen. No, I just wanted to make a point. Jody, if the board had come to people and said, "How can we save money? How can we save money for our school and, you know, let us roundtable with you?" I'm sure that you would have had this whole group in here.
All right, we've done that before. And we have our budget hearings and our budget discussions before we come to the town meeting, before we go to a vote. We probably had, I don't know, eight to ten people show up to the budget hearing and actually give their opinions on all of it. We did, that's how that works.
Well, I was really told to be quiet when I was raising my hand, asking questions, trying to be my opinion. That's why I saw what it needed, so...
But my thought is, in correctional honesty, yes or no? You wouldn't have had your husband propose this eight-hundred-thousand dollars if you hadn't already looked into making it work before Saturday. Yes or no?
I can't, I don't have control over my husband.
We're two different people.
Okay, I pillow-talk my husband. Sorry, man, everybody in this room does. So if you can make me, if you can look me in the eye and tell me that you swear to your god, whatever your god is, because I know it's different, that you've never talked to your wife before Saturday about this eight-hundred thousand.
You did, you told her, I lived there for a couple of days.
Okay. So my point is, you are...
Why aren't you posted on the community news saying this is what they're talking about?
Because then it would look like I was promoting it, wouldn't it?
No, because...
Yes, no, it doesn't matter what I say.
Can I finish my sentence? It would look like you cared enough to be like, "This is my husband's opinion. I represent the school board, not my husband. If you want to come vote on this, come vote on it."
I don't think you would have done that because you didn't want people to turn out, other than your friends, Jody. I'm sorry.
If you had posted, it would have looked like bold closure. This is what I found out my husband is proposing. I am against this supposedly because I'm on the school board and I want to keep the budget that we've been working on. Please come support my vote. But you knew about it, you didn't want to go against your husband, so you didn't tell him or the rest of us?
Adam.
I'm just wondering if there's any sort of obligation, if you did have firsthand knowledge, to put it out as like a one article per, like, if it would be like the town report?
Probably, son. But this happened two days before the meeting.
I'm just asking because I don't...
And I don't think there is, anyway.
It's like something in this magnitude should have been maybe written down, and maybe it wouldn't have shocked so many people, and given people some time.
I think there's a deadline for putting in Warren Guard.
And it was like back in early February?
January.
Early February.
It was before that his school budget was even finalized.
Yeah.
Are you guys awesome around any, um, ideas about, you know, education not requiring any kind of service? If I can watch TV or...
Yes, of course.
I, I couldn't zoom this meeting at home if I...
Right, exactly.
Um, so, so, no, that is not something that I'm gonna be pushing for to try to make anyone rely on internet at home for schooling their kids.
Yeah, I mean, I personally consider homeschooling my son and I've looked into the homeschooling and internet is one of the main options and it's just not feasible for our town.
Yeah, my, my son could tell you the story. We, we had been using internet-based stuff for their homeschooling for a couple of years prior to moving here. And in the last year, we trashed it and went a different route. He's finishing up completely, you know, the method that somebody brought up, once they learn to, to read, they can teach themselves. Well, this is one kid that actually does prepare well with that. I don't expect most, I wouldn't have done well with that.
Like if we cram one after the other to a computer read that way, but I'm just hoping here maybe a couple of other options so I can use it.
So I've, I've done a bit of research on my own because like I said, we can't collaborate outside of these meetings. Um, I came up, came across a couple of ideas, one of which was really cool on the surface, but then it, it's a state program, it's, what was it called? Um, it was a voucher, it was kinda like a voucher program.
Like a free development account thing?
Yeah, free development. But it's restricted only to low income levels, so if you make, if you've got, you and your wife and two kids, a family of four, if you make more than eighty, you don't get to use it. So, I'm, I'm coming across ideas, but some of them are just being marked off because we can't rely on those sorts of things.
And the sporting angle, you know, oh, my son played baseball or some of the young here wants to play football, is that gonna be the first thing approved?
Well, there's, I mean, there's options for that. I know, uh, as homeschoolers, you can still send your kids to other schools.
Oh, yeah, they are. Well, yeah, yeah. If my son wanted to go to football with Newport, he could do so.
And then what's the cost? Is it to the parent?
No, it's, it's covered by the school.
It is, it's an additional cost to the school board. Say, say like, we decide to do remote learning, we want these pods, and it's five thousand bucks, and then you wanna send your son to play football, is an additional cost to that? Or is that all?
And it would, I mean, as coming from going, a Corrigan setting goes to Newport, I would presume that Newport would push that cost off onto us. But again, I've been doing this for...
Right.
Forty-eight hours. So, I'm, I'm gonna be learning a lot in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I think we all learn. Yeah, for sure.
I imagine that there's not going to be one solution...
Right.
...to this problem, um, that works. I think if it is going to work, it'll have to be a multiple, a multitude of solutions and people choose different options. And the online learning might work for some people and it might not work for other people. One thought that I had on the online thing was if somebody's going to go for a twenty-four hundred dollar online program, we could probably buy them a five hundred dollar Starlink...
Right.
And put it on their front lawn. So, I think that there's ways that we can think outside the box.
I've been on a waiting list for Starlink for four months now.
I got mine. Yeah, uh, no, actually. But the cord was cut, wait, um...
I just have one more question. Can I just add one more? Brief, quick question. Since you, the board, re-voted you in and you work for us, are you going to listen to the majority if we attempt to come to every one of your meetings and we give you what our expressions are towards children of Corrigan? Are you gonna listen to the majority or are you gonna listen to who you feel is most, uh, closest to you or your friends or whatnot? Are you gonna listen honestly to the majority?
Personally, I will listen to constructive comments.
I think we should each answer this.
Yeah, absolutely. That's very good.
Yeah, I like that. What did you say?
Wait, I got it.
He said that we should each answer the question.
Like the three of us.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, I didn't hear what he said either. Will, will you, Aaron?
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly listen to, um, folks' opinions and, and the majority, but I think it would, I mean, as long as it fits within the eight hundred thousand dollar budget, of course. If we can find a way to make it work, then let's do it. But if the majority is no, we, we don't want to keep it in an eight hundred thousand dollar budget, then that's a different story.
I don't want pod teach my grandchildren, nor do I want to have them go to a different school or homeschool. It works for you and your wife and that's awesome? That is awesome.
I don't know whether it would, um...
Sorry.
Any, sorry, so I lost my train of thought there.
How's it going?
But, I mean, if, if, I'm certainly open to taking whatever ideas people have and if we get together, come up with a way to keep it inside eight hundred thousand dollars, I think that's gonna be a huge win. I think it's gonna be really hard to do that and I think we're all gonna have to put our brains together, so...
And if it doesn't, and if the majority of us are positive and try to help you, and it doesn't stay within an eight hundred thousand, are you gonna listen to us when we say, "Listen, we wanna keep our kids here, we wanna keep our..."
I mean, if we can't find a way to keep it in eight hundred thousand dollars, I think we've already heard the answer, we have to...
We have to go for a little bit of funding if we cannot find a way.
But we need a proposal. We need to figure something out.
We need to try to make it work.
We need public schools.
And if everybody comes in and just says, "No, no, 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 no", and votes against everything that we're doing, that's hard to listen to. That's what I mean by constructive, that's not constructive.
But we need the public schools, as you just said.
It's gonna be a public school.
Right, and the negotiation is not...
Yeah, the football law is free, the whatever else is free, I don't know, because I'm on ball.
Nothing's free.
No, I know.
Yeah.
But you're trying to get it free, you're telling, or somebody was just saying, "Yeah, you can go to Newport free for football." Who'd just say that?
My, my son is a homeschooler, has that option. I don't know how that process works. I know that my wife, last year when we first, uh, were, were looking at the options for, you know, homeschooling stuff in, in New Hampshire because we newly live in New Hampshire, she read somewhere that homeschoolers can take advantage of the sports programs in public schools. I don't know how that process works.
In their districts?
I don't know who would have...
And that is, and that is true, um, the private schools actually can send their kids Montessori, not really, they can go to a public school.
It has to do with the district you live in or that gets tuitioned to, as long as somebody's paying them.
Right, but common sense, you're not throwing out the common sense of everything. Well, we can send them there for under ten thousand dollars. Okay, so if it costs eighty-seven hundred dollars to go to Montessori, are you gonna pay back the parents thirteen hundred dollars? Because you said it's ten thousand, or somebody said it's ten thousand a kid, which I guess it's gonna be less than that now. But let's say it's ten thousand a kid. So are you gonna rebate the parents to send their kids to the private schools that are eighty-seven hundred?
The ten thousand, I think, is meant to be an average. So, some, some families might opt for an option that costs twenty-four hundred dollars, some might go to a charter school that costs nothing, some might have a special needs kid that costs a whole heck of a lot more than ten thousand, but the average has to work out. It's meant to come out to ten thousand per child.
Right, and that's why your Mount Oil, your, your Montessoris, they don't pay for busing, they don't have the superintendent, they don't have the sports curriculums, they don't have all that stuff, so theirs can go down. And I know that's what you're looking for at the high school level. I understand that's what your, your little prince, prince here is trying to get you to do, but public schools are not gonna be able to go down. They have all that other stuff built in that these other two schools don't have. They don't have.
Yeah, they have a lot of fixed costs and, um, do you Sunapee as an example? How many students, three that we have going there? Um, it's, I mean, we have twelve kids.
It's three per year.
So the question becomes, do those incremental children really add any cost to the school? Because there's so much fixed overhead with the buildings and the teaching staff and the desks.
Absolutely.
And so, if the answer is a couple of extra kids don't really add any significant cost, then it behooves them to take them at whatever price. So, we don't really, you know, I can't predict exactly how it'll go, but it might be interesting coming down if it means that that's what it takes to keep those kids coming in.
If I can jump in, maybe it'll add any financial cost, except that Sunapee has budgeted for them and they've already passed their budget. And they have considered the tuition that we already said we would pay as part of their revenue. And I know part of your presentation before you abandoned the budget that you spent a whole year preparing, part of your, uh, presentation had to do with the revenue that we were looking at, which had gone down. You know, Sunapee's not gonna look favorably and not gonna say, "Oh, you know, they don't really add much, they're not gonna cost as much", when suddenly they have twelve kids times fourteen thousand dollars.
Maybe a year they could.
Maybe, probably not next year though.
I'm not gonna pretend to have very many answers that can be broken down. Um, but what I can say is that I have an open mind to try to figure out how to make this work. And it might not work, but I'm gonna try to make it work in these whatever eighteen days that we have. Uh, and I appreciate what, uh, Skip?
Yes.
Appreciate what Skip said, um, about listening. I mean, one of the reasons I don't, I haven't said much today and I didn't say a whole lot at the meeting on Saturday is because I was trying to listen to what people are saying and take that in to help, kind of inform what I'm thinking and, um, but, you know, the way I see it is we've been given a budget, we have eighteen days to see if we can find a way to make it work. We might not, but I'm gonna try real hard to see if we can make it a reality in that time, before I give up. And I'm hearing a lot of immediate rejections to any thoughts and ideas that we have, but we've only had two days. We, we don't know if these ideas will work and there might be some that we haven't thought of yet. Um, so that's how I'm gonna go at it for now and, I mean, ask me again in eighteen days.
But the bottom line is Jody about this two days ahead of time, that you worked on this.
Yeah, we're gonna keep going in circles and circles and circles on it.
We're, we're showing you to our new, Jody's not, and if Jody cared about it...
I'm gonna blur for over here. Aaron, can I ask you if you knew about this before Saturday, this budget cut?
Um...
The sigh suggests you did and you're wet, maybe you heard.
The night before and that's it.
Okay, so if you knew about it and you cared about keeping the budget, then why did this info not go out to everyone saying, "Come to the meeting and support us to keep the budget"? Because we all would've been there if we knew that this big a budget cut was on the table.
And I don't think you were supposed to discuss school things outside of the school meeting, so how did you hear about it?
I didn't tell him.
No, I'm asking you.
That's...
No, we can't discuss it with each other outside of the school.
Just to each other. He could talk to you.
The three of us.
Okay, so can I ask you, Aaron, where are you heard it?
Hi, Joe Marco. I think it was, I think it was, uh, I was in here for eating Christie or something.
But either you moved on online, you pulled everyone aside, you cared about the budget, say, "Come on up." Either of you that knew about it could've gone online and said, "Everyone, come on up to this meeting, we know that this is gonna happen." We've already hired this budget that we want to keep, if you wanna keep it, come on up.
But your, your agenda should have been for to let us people know that you knew something that we didn't.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't know that it was, uh, definitive, the thing was gonna happen. I mean, Ian has crazy ideas all the time and Joe said that, uh, he was thinking about putting something forward on the floor and that was about as far as, you know, I, I gave up.
So you both knew the night before this agenda was gonna be brought up at the meeting? Or put it far, put it back?
That it could be.
Can I ask you, Kevin, did you know the night before?
I was not. He wasn't sworn in yet.
That's okay. I just wanna know if he got hurt.
Well, I met Ian and, um, Joe Marco the day of the elections on Tuesday. Um, had a brief conversation with them just because they knew who I was because I was running for school board. And they, they saw my social media posts, so they were chatting with me about my opinions of things, um...
So you did know about that?
I didn't mean...
Did they promote eight hundred thousand dollars?
No. He mentioned ideas that he didn't like, how much this, this, the school budget was, but he didn't mention anything about...
No numbers.
Any secretive, you know, whatever. I don't, no, I didn't know anything about that.
I mean, Ian, I mean, he, last year he made a ransom comment and, you know, so it's, every year he makes some comment like that. I didn't know, certainly didn't know it turned into what it did. And it was quite overwhelming.
I didn't believe the town was gonna vote for it.
So you didn't have the number, you didn't know the number the night before what he was saying?
And to be quite honest with you, the, the way the meeting went on Saturday was a complete learning experience for me. Because I come from, like Skip does, towns where these decisions are put on a ballot and it's part of the election. I actually called, um, Christie, Christie, uh, the week before the election and asked her, "What measures are on the ballot this year?". And she's like, "Nothing, it's just people running for things." So, so, so when do these measures keep? And so I didn't even find out until this meeting that I came to that this is how this town works. And it's like, "Oh." So, my wife, you know, my wife was sitting over there during the meeting and we were both looking at each other like, "Is this being decided like right now?". And we went home and it's like, "So twenty-four people just literally decided this budget? Is that really what just happened?". So, this was a, I was like, "Wow!". So, it was a learning experience for me and I'm gonna be running a lot more over the coming year because I've never lived in a town that operates like this, it's...
Well, it doesn't, well, that's...
Our...
You know, all the voting in the year.
The, the voting procedure, I've, I've never seen it done this way before, so it's...
It happens all the time. We have things voted down in the town meeting too, where we put together a budget at the last minute and people say, "You know what? We don't wanna do this, we don't wanna do that, we're gonna take three hundred thousand dollars out, we'll cut something." This is the way that, welcome to Corrigan, this is how a small town...
Yeah, I'm, I'm learning, it's, it's fascinating, I'm...
Well, great question, I have one now. Dom, I can follow your question, you got the select board meeting. The town was looking for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on one because of two hundred thousand a year.
Angie asked your question at this.
Exactly, Corrigan Board. Yes, we can ask you with that, right? What do you want us to cut? Do you want us to wanna hear your plan? Thought, your point was great. So you wanna cut the school board? We'd really just like to hear a plan.
And Angie asked that question and my answer to her is my answer to you, which is I don't want them to cut because cutting never works. Every time they try to cut, they end up spending more. Every year they try to cut and we've increased the budget here by thirty percent over three years. Cutting does not work. My plan was to present a number that is doable and yet would require them to actually go back and consider first principles, like, "Why are we doing this?
Is it to make every child's life as good as possible, or is it to meet the requirements that the state Supreme Court put on the state, which is, briefly, to make sure that every educable child has the...
What the hell does that mean?
Ask the court. Every educable child has the opportunity to learn these skills and knowledge that are necessary to participate intelligently in the American political, economic, and social systems of free government. You never have to actually consider that if what you're doing is saying, "Well, this is what we did last year, it's what we'll do next year, what can we add? Can we add snowshoes? Can we add violins?" That's the way that they cut things. So, I'm actually, my idea was just to say, have a number that's doable, but small enough, that you have to actually go back and consider what the purpose is, and to actually consider not just the parents. And my comment that I came up to make was, I hope you do consider, listen to the majority, because even the majority of parents in town are actually a minority of the people here. Most of the people, vast majority of people here are being treated like farm animals, they're being treated like eggs. We will take as many, as much from you as we can get. And they don't come to the meetings, because they feel there's no point in it, because a small, concentrated group of parents will show up and commandeer the meeting and get exactly what they want. One of the things I wanted to accomplish, and I think I actually have, is that from now on, nobody is ever going to go, "It doesn't matter if I go to the town or district meeting." Everybody is gonna go to every meeting from now on, because nobody should have that kind of control.
You say that, but when you came out and drove to vote by over eighty percent, say the police not too long ago, you got turned around and found in.
Yeah.
So, what was your vote?
Okay, so, and, and right after that, what happened? Russell and I won reelection by a two-to-one margin, because all those people out there, all the people out there who supported us were not coming to meetings. They were being quiet.
You pointed it that way, or you think that people were fed up and disurged when they're already loud enough to vote? Eighty to twenty?
We just haven't been...
Yeah, nobody wanted to vote, because your vote doesn't carry any weight.
Were you at that meeting?
I was at that meeting. It was the very first time in his entire life he's been at a meeting. It was a huge fan win, because he's a stubborn old man, he came out, and he voiced his opinion, and it was shot down next week. Do you think that number is gonna get off the couch and vote and waste us time? No, it's not, because when your voice isn't heard, and your voice isn't recognized, it loses its value.
What happened there, though, what happened there, though, was a hundred and eighty people who did not typically vote came out to support that decision. They had been sitting on their hands for years, for decades, because they thought, what did, and now they came out, because they could have come out. We did it purposely close to the election, because then the town would have a chance to come out and say, "You guys get lost, and we'll reinstate them," and they could have done that. They came out and said, "We support you," and we knew that from talking to people in town, how much support there was of people who don't bother to make a lot of noise at meetings.
I think you're confusing trust with people that don't bother anyway.
And then I got re-elected, so I think people trust me.
I think that would be up for debate as well.
And that's fine, too.
I wanna know, I wanna know, Beth, Beth has something to say right now.
Further point.
Yeah, just a really quick, and Skip probably is gonna say the same thing. The school board does not become an SB two voting district automatically. This has to go on a warrant next year, and your voting population has to say yes or no.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Say a brief announcement, do you wanna talk to them?
No.
Oh, she didn't hold a hand up.
I'm already a little...
I'm talking to the president. Out of the eight-hundred-thousand dollars, does the administrative portion come out first, or is that pro-rated along with the rest of the...
It's in there.
It's all just in the budget. We have to, we have to cover how much administrative is gonna cost.
The administrative may not get the hundred ninety, they may get fifty.
Yeah.
We don't know.
They might not get it.
I'm not ready to negotiate.
Something's saying the whole eight-thousand is not just for tuition.
So, when they say, when they say cost of sending a kid to school, and cost of education for a year is ten thousand, that means the administration cost, the teacher cost, the building cost, the transportation cost, all of those costs go into how much per student gets...
And it's hard enough to give to a committed teacher without continually being afraid that their salaries are gonna get cut.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Or if they're on the job.
Absolutely.
You go to my... That's smart.
Yeah.
To Beth's point, it took us eight elections to get SB two. It's not easy. Most people want the traditional town meeting, but now that we've got it, voting has gone up. In every single kind of election, whether it's a midterm, midterm, off-year like right now, or a presidential, more people come out. Now, and I'm sorry, hi from...
I'm off, I said, I'm saying...
That's fine.
You see how bad I am in names?
My name is Skip.
Skip, okay.
I know you and Natalie, the just last, were going and trying to convince the school board that it was incumbent upon them to tell you what was going on.
It just seems very respectful of them.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully say, you need to flip that. Town meetings, because my town was town meeting style well before, always had groups of lots of voters that always knew what was going on. They didn't assume anything. Things would pass, things would go down, I was on the winning side, I was on the losing side. But there was organization going on all the time between who wanted what. Again, when I stood up here the first time, I said, democracy, the democratic style we run our republic requires an involved and informed people. You cannot do this well unless you do know what's going on and actively find out. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. My wife looks at me like I'm nuts sometimes, because I do. And sometimes I feel good, sometimes I feel bad, depending on the outcome. So, I would say, instead of blaming the three of them, ask yourself, how can I get involved for the issues that are important to me well before that thing happens, like it did, I guess, a couple of days ago at your town meeting? Be proactive, not reactive. Okay? And, like, you know, this unsolicited advice is worth every penny you didn't pay for. But take that to heart, and just think about that. Along, if, I don't know who the other lady was, but for everybody here, if you don't like it, you gotta do something about it.
I just think that everyone's had an element of trust, that if something big was going to go down, that we would know about it.
It's, what I'm telling you, what I'm telling you is that nobody is responsible to do that, except for you yourself. It's not up to him, or him, or these people up here, or this person, or these folks over here. It's on you. That's how our system was created and designed.
And I will be continually paranoid forever, being coming forward that I have no idea what's coming up, because no one's gonna tell me, so I'll show up.
Well, it's up to you to try to do that homework. Being paranoid can be a good thing. It really can be. I'm paranoid most of the time, because I spend all, I'm a political blogger, I run the largest political blog site here in New Hampshire. I'm unindated with stuff that goes on to the point where I go, "I can't take it anymore." But you gotta do it, because the votes and the results of those votes depend on you, not them, not them, it depends on you. And with that, I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you again, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, I would like to send a time for the next meeting. I was supposed to do that before everybody left.
If you guys have any, if you'd like to share with any other options?
No, we didn't do any research. We didn't do any...
I'm just asking.
I haven't said anything, any other information, that you had mentioned. I think we're all a trouble, but thank you for us.
All right, thank you for asking, actually.
Been wanting to open the door all day, and open the door in the heart. When are we gonna do the...
So, I apologize for that, because I realize everybody's been telling me tonight, right?
So, we're playing right now.
Yes.
I mean, I think it has to be soon.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be...
Thursday's time.
I think I can do it.
I can do some of this.
That's what I called it.
I'll wait till...
We do...
Right now, Tom, we need to...
Saturday morning?
Right now.
We're working on...
Oh, no, I can do it. I can do it. I can, now that things out there, the arriving, but I can do it. Two can be with me, but you don't have to say all three.
We just get to it now.
We have to give the public two days notice, so I don't want, I don't want it at nine-thirty
on Monday, give them notice that six-thirty Wednesday, that's not even eight hours.
But even on Thursday, it means... I'm saying, I'm just saying...
I can be Thursday.
I'm just saying, any two...
I don't know.
Thursday's not forty-eight hours.
This Thursday?
It's Monday.
Do you know what they said?
It will be so.
I think we're already at the same age.
It's been a long couple of days. But Fran, Jake said about twenty-one, two, and twenty-three?
For next week.
For next week? Are you gonna do it before next week?
We're talking about it.
You didn't think it's done to you?
Yeah, well, the next meeting, we're gonna, we might be a little bit more public, but we're gonna focus on actually getting some work.
And maybe we...
And for those of you that are here, while we work, you're free to still be here and observe the decision process that's happening.
Research.